Hey, how you doing?
All right.
How you doing?
Good, good.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
It's a long email. He's got.
Yeah, we had to do that because it's so long.
Hey, Will, how you doing?
Hammond City Council Public Hearing Agenda, April 12th, 2022, 5:30 PM. Roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Divatario.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilman Wells.
Item number one.
An ordinance.
An ordinance to amend UDC number eight to add a suburban highway overlay district, SH, to allow for new development to fit within the context of the proposed overlay district, Z dash two zero one nine dash one one dash zero 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 one five. Jeffrey Lewenberger.
Yes, Jeffrey Lewenberger, City of Hammond, city planner. The Planning Commission, this has been running for a couple of years, has been requesting that we take a look at the Build Two line that is in our zoning ordinances. Basically, it, so the Build Two line is where the buildings have to be built to. You have setbacks, which means you have to be setback so much from a building line. A Build Two line means you have to be so close to a building line. And typically, in our ordinances, that's zero to fifteen feet is what those Build Two lines have to be. So.
Zero to what? Zero?
Zero to fifteen.
Okay.
The Planning Commission has, has for the last couple of years, seen issues with that for the health, safety and welfare of the city, especially in the suburban areas where you have the large highways, five lanes, some of them don't have sidewalks and all that. So they wanted to try and come up with a better solution because just in the last years, we've had seven variances that have cited the safety reasons of having buildings so close to major highways in the arterial. So what I did was I went back, in your packet, you have a report from, I took information from our comprehensive plan, kind of compared it to our major street plan, and with that, came up with that report that's in your packet and a recommendation to tweak that regulation. And so the Planning Commission, back in March, on March 3rd, voted to recommend approval of that ordinance to you guys. And it was introduced. You had asked me to go back and do a press release to the media. I did. There was an article in the Hammond Star. And from that point, I've received two official comments. Well, one official comment and then one that was just kind of questioning, for the most part, it's just been people bouncing questions off of me. Nothing official has been submitted or anything like that. And basically, what's being added is, I took the comprehensive plan, took our major arterials that are in our major street plan, and in the suburban areas of those, of those major arterials, any lot fronting them, the Build Two line would be increased from, from zero to fifteen to zero to eighty-five feet. Basically, that eighty-five feet would then give, was the compromise with the Planning Commission, to give enough room so the buildings are still close to the center and not, or close to the street and not, not hurting the intent of the ordinance, in my opinion. And it'll allow for one parking lot in front. It would still encourage the buildings to be placed nearer to the front without the safety risk of major highways that wouldn't have that, that don't have sidewalks, that aren't in the plans for DOTD to put sidewalks in currently. And, but in order for them to extend that Build Two right away, they would have to make sure that they have a parking screening. And we, I also did put a bunch of different recommendations that I feel the city should take into considera, into consideration, one of which would be get a bike and pedestrian plan in place because many cities do have that. So we kind of have an understanding of where new capital improvement projects would be going for that. So that was also part of the recommendation. So, that in a nutshell, I know I said a lot, but the, basically, what we're creating is, what we're proposed to create is an overlay district that would cover all lots fronting major arterials in the list that I've provided. And I also provided a map in your packets that show where those areas would be. And in those areas, developers would be allowed to set their building back up to eighty-five feet, which would allow them to be further away from the street for the health and safety along those major arterials. And, but it would also make them install landscaping along, along the parking lot in order to kind of soften that area. And by not totally eliminating the Build Two line, you're not ruining that scalability of the city and the human scale of what's going on. So that is the proposal that's before you tonight. And with that said, I know I said a lot, but if there's any questions, that'd be great.
So that's only in CH zone properties?
It's all, it's all zone properties. That, that was one of the questions that somebody had asked me informally was, it is all, it's, overlay districts cover all zoning districts that are in that overlay district. So this would cover, no matter which zone it would, it would fall in those overlays. So like I was saying, for the most part, Build Two lines are only found in the commercial districts and along most of these major corridors are commercial districts, so.
Any question, any other question from anyone else on the council?
Yeah, how you doing, Mr. Jeffrey?
Good.
Uh, look, they had a realtor here the last time we was talking about this. Did you guys get a chance to meet and talk about some things? Because I know he was talking about the sidewalk on the building. And I think the way y'all had it, it was five feet, started six. The realtor that was here, and we was talking about.
BZ Landry. I think that was BZ Landry, and I think that's what you were saying, you increased it to eighty-five from the original proposal from the planning zone.
Yeah, because that was, at first it was sixty-five, which basically just gave enough room for parking stalls, a little bit of landscaping. And by increasing it to eighty-five, that would allow them to not only preserve some of the right of way along the road in case sidewalks did come in, but that would allow them to put extra landscaping in the front and along the building if needed. And that's why it was increased from sixty-five to eighty-five.
So when y'all had a meeting, it was a meeting for the public, right?
Yes.
So in the process of having a meeting, how many y'all had in there, in that meeting?
I think I have it in the report. I don't think anybody's came to speak for or against it at that meeting. It was just the planning commissioners that were at that meeting.
Okay.
And we're holding a public hearing right now, so.
All right. Because a lot of times, and it need to be known, uh.
Oh, I did want to point out that I don't, I might be repeating myself. I did do the press release and it was in the Hammond Star, yeah. I am repeating myself.
Okay. No, because a lot of times, when we doing stuff like this here, the public is not aware of it until it take place. And I know this is our second time talking about this. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, everybody was aware of it. And this time, we even gave them a second opportunity to even talk about it. And I'm glad you changed the footage from sixty-five to eighty-five, right? Yes, that's what I'm looking at.
And I do want to point, like, we are making it a little bit more flexible for people. So that is one of the things too that this accomplishes. They don't have to do the fif, they don't have to build the fifteen, they can go further back. So it's building your flexibility into the ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. That's it for me.
Any concerns citizens reach out to you throughout the time, the department?
Um, I had a, I had a couple of concerns, not formally submitted, just worried about the pedestrian ability of the city. I'm a huge pedestrian advocate myself. I really like our ordinances because it does encourage pedestrian, pedestrian activity in our city. But I also do understand the safety issues that come with having buildings that close to major arterials. So that's why I try to work in some language and to make, to make sure that when and if those areas got sidewalks and that the scalability of those buildings still met within the pedestrian ramifications of the development.
So you feel that the pros outweigh the cons?
Oh, yeah.
Anyone here?
I'd say I appreciate the press release. I thought that was helpful. And then also, just a note for anyone listening and paying attention, that this is not affecting downtown and any of those, having the buildings to the front of the streets and protecting the historic nature of downtown. We're not allowing eighty-five foot setbacks in downtown.
I would, no.
Right. Thank you.
Anyone from the public here on this matter? All right. Item number two.
An ordinance, excuse me, an ordinance to grant an expanded conditional use ECU on a lot being zero point four zero seven acres in accordance with a survey by William J. Bodine Jr., dated two nine twenty twenty-two, requested by Anthony and Joyce Cox, located at eleven oh six South Pine Street, Z dash two zero two two dash zero two dash zero zero nine eight. Jeffrey Lewenberger.
This is an expanded conditional use that's at eleven oh six South Pine Street. Basically, the applicant that went to our March 3rd meeting wants to, well, first of all, I want to put the caveat that currently, the property is, is in an RN2 district, which does allow for duplexes. What the applicant wanted was to have a family member live in one of the duplexes and run a hair salon out of another duplex, or of the other side of the duplex, which requires an ECU to do, to implement that kind of thing. In addition, that by granting an ECU, it expires at the change of ownership or, of the property. And so at that point, it would just resort back to a duplex that is allowed in that zoning district, so.
To be clear, you said that a duplex is allowed. So what we're concerned with is the ability to have a hair salon when it's not technically zoned to allow a hair salon.
It'd be a home business on the other side, yes.
Okay.
What district this in?
Um, I believe it's in year.
It's in District Three. I'll help you out. Yes, it's in my district.
Yeah, I can say it. I think it's in yours.
Yeah, yeah. And the reason I said that, uh, I talked to Ms. Cox, and I talked to her husband. And did you go over there and see what was going on?
Oh, yeah, I've been over there several times, yes.
Okay. Did you see what was going on on Pine Street itself, on both sides of the street?
Yes.
And you see how I look over there, right?
Yes.
So you do, did you see the new house that Ms. Cox just built over there, right?
Yep.
And I'm saying that to say this here, I thank Ms. Cox for everything she doing. And to be exact, I, I think, and I've been praying that she stay in the community because she said if the community keep going the way it's going, she actually gonna move out. But I thank her and her husband for trying to invest, for not trying to invest in the community to make the improvements. So in the process of me saying that, and I'm glad you rode over there, and I wish you can get planning and zoning to the start riding in the community, starting making decisions and not even knowing what's going on. And you did see what's on both sides of the street, and I'm asking you that again.
Yep.
And you see how bad it look, right?
We're also in talks with code compliance to get some of that stuff cleaned up, too.
Yeah, because that's one of the biggest issue that me as a city councilman have, can't speak for the rest of them. But we having in that area, the department that you in, I'm gonna say the Building Permit Office, we having a lot of issues with code enforcement. And I went to the planning and zoning meeting, even they saying it taking six months to get something, three to six months to get something done. And we gonna have to do better than that. I know that's not your department, but I'm speaking about it because I want the public to be aware, you know, you can say negative things about the community, but if you stay there, you will see what's going on in the community. The community really trying to clean itself up. And thanks to Ms. Cox for what she's trying to do, her and her husband and her family, and I appreciate it. So I just wanted to be said on record that I support the things that they are trying to do. And hopefully, Ms. Cox, y'all do, stay in District Three, don't leave out. Thank you, Mr. Jeffrey.
And I did, I don't think I, the zoning, zoning commission did do a recommendation of this, three to zero.
Any other question from anyone else on the council? Anyone from the public on this matter? Step to the microphone, give your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Ms. Joyce Cox, and I've been, I live at four oh four Phoenix Square for the past thirty-five years, and I was raised up on nine oh four South Pine Street, which is around the block from where I live, Phoenix and Pine. I own several lots in that area, but the lot that we're talking about specifically is eleven oh six South Pine, we're requesting the duplex, one side residential and the other side salon for the family, my daughter and grandchildren. We'll be, buy apartments only, and it could contain six to ten cars, and everybody come in by apartments only. And we have other land if needed, if needed, we have other lots of land. We happen to have a lot of extra, a lot of extra, you know, we accidentally made a whole lot of extras, so you all can have one for your records, if you don't mind, just give everybody one of the land that we have been blessed to own. And we'll be like, councilman said, we're trying to clean the area. Thank you all so much for the stop sign. It is a blessing, thank God. This will be a salon there, one side residential. And I began doing this with Tracy when, before she left, and she told me that Pine Street wasn't a good area for residential, for commercial. And I didn't know like I know today that I could have came before you all and let you all made the final decision, but we just went over where she told me to go, on Pine Street. And when we got there, we seen so much debris, so much, it's like a deserted area. So we began to come and talk to Mr. Jeffrey, we met him, to take off where Tracy left. We also got some names, we begin to walk the community. I was raised there, but I begin to walk the community and meet the community and neighbors to see if it's okay with them about the salon, and they, they all have their names here. Where they signed, if they couldn't make it, they signed their name and address if they couldn't make it on that salon and that duplex. We'll, we'll be there to help the community. So we looked at all the debris and everything there. We have some pictures as well, so you all can look at. We got some work done here. So I called Mr., I called the city, talked to Mr. Valimetro, he referred me to Robert Morgan, referred me to Robert Williams, referred me to Dora. I don't mind whatever I have to do. We gonna be a residential, beautiful, beautification, our residential area. So Morgan said, I have to call the police to move the cars. That didn't work. The police said that these cars are fine, as long as they not blocking the stop sign. So I began to look in the community. I see children can't get out in the sidewalk because the abandoned cars are blocking it. The elderly man have to drive his scooter in the middle of the road because the abandoned cars and debris and all that is in the way. So we just trying to beautify this community as well as, you know, building our duplex on that side.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. Is there anyone else? Approach the microphone, please, give your name and address.
My name is Donald Burton. I live at three eleven Cedar Lane, Ponte Tula, Louisiana. And I'd just like to start off, Joyce Cox and Anthony Cox are my parents. I was raised on Phoenix Square and Pine Street majority of my life before I moved to Ponte Tula, and that's my roots. And what they're trying to do is plant a seed back into the community. And if you look at fruit, before they can blossom, it has to be a seed. And this seed that they're trying to plant, they're doing everything they can to make sure that all the elements are there to not just prosper within their portion, but the entire community. And just like the gentleman was saying, you know, when, when he passed by and he seen, you know, different things that needed to be updated or things that need to be reestablished, that's what we're trying to do. So I just came on behalf of my parents to say that, you know, I'm standing in the gap with them to, to make a better place, just one establishment at a time.
Thank you, sir. Oh, you said you was from Hammond, huh? I'm trying to see how Hammond let you get away, end up being a police in Ponte Tula. How Hammond let you get away, man?
It, it was one lucky girl that blew a kiss at me and I didn't turn it back.
Boy, you did right. Thank you, sir.
Nicole will be one six one six seven Blue Bay Street, Ponte Tula, Louisiana. And I would be operating the salon. I have about three months left of cosmetology school. I graduated in about three months. Joyce Cox and Anthony Cox, they're my parents. And I grew up in the community also, and I think it'll be great for the community. I think it'll look good, will keep it clean and professional, and we can't wait to do it. So, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Cox, I'm gonna tell you, don't you let nobody else come up here. We got a long night tonight now, so you good.
I just want to thank my family. My father, my family, they be doing a good job. They are a prophet there, witness we went out there trying to get everybody off the streets, trying to bring them in church, because she worked with the jailhouse for thirty years with the inmates. And I think that'd be a good job to try to clean up the neighborhood and try to get things together. And also, I want to say, I thank the city for putting the stop signs out. I seen the other day, the, the stop signs is very great, and we need to just search around Hammer, like the mayor used to say, let's beautify Hammer, Louisiana. And I got something to say, I'm gonna let other people talk, but I got one thing to say. Can I say fast or run or do what?
You gotta wait till the end. They, they re, they rechange the schedule on here. Thank you, though.
God, for all y'all, y'all been doing a great job in Hammer. I'm glad to be back in Hammer. Twenty-two years I moved back, and anything I could do to help the city, like they say, I'm nosy. Yes, I'm nosy, because guess what? I'm gonna live in a nosy, good neighborhood, because I don't have no problem with my neighborhood, because guess what? They know me, my name Jacqueline F. Taylor, and I'm gonna call the police, I'm gonna get my neighborhood, and the city of Hammer together, thank you. And I'm the FBI.
All right. Last item on the agenda for the public here.
An ordinance to annex Ferris Family LLC property being a zero point one eight one acre portion of Track A dash one per survey by David Patterson, PLS date two two twenty twenty-two, located at two three zero seven West Thomas Street, to be zoned, CH, and is in the city council District Four, Z dash two zero two two dash zero two dash zero 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 nine nine. Jeffrey Lewenberger.
Yep, this is another annexation request that came from our Planning Commission meeting back in March 3rd, and the recommended approval was through to zero. And basically, it's, it's a property, it's a parcel that's located off of two three oh seven West Thomas Street. There's currently a portion of the parcel that's, or a parcel that's in the city, and what we're, and what they're doing is just wanting to annex a portion in the rear of that to complete what their business plan is for that site plan. So that's what this annexation request is, and you should have maps in your packet for that.
It's always nice to welcome in property, especially when it potentially is sales tax generating, so.
Jill, I know it's not in my district, but what district it is in?
District Four.
Okay. Oh, that's it, for me?
We're good?
Any questions? Anybody have a question from the council?
No, no, I'm good, I'm good, yeah. Anybody else?
All right. That concludes our public here. Now we move right into our regular agenda setting. Hammond City Council Regular Session Agenda, six, well, not, April the 12th, 2022. Roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilman Divatario.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilman Wells.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
At this time, I'd like to call up Pastor Andrew Jackson, who will lead us in our prayer.
Father God, we come today looking to thee, knowing that thou art God, and beside thee there is no other. Heavenly Father, we're standing here and we're standing together. Father, we ask that you would give us unity. Father, we ask that you would give, look upon this nation, look upon the state, look upon the city right now. But Father, we ask that you would go even beyond the nation. We ask that you would go beyond the state and the city, that you would look upon this world right now. Father, you know that we're in turmoil, and there's no one that can put it back together except you. Father, I ask that you would give our elected officials, give them wisdom right now. They need wisdom in order to do that that you would have them to do. Father, we ask that you would just continue to hold them in the palm of your most tender but powerful hands. Father, we ask that you would lead them, guide them, and show them the way. Look upon this community, Father, continue to bring us together, give us the unity that we need right now. You said in your word, if my people that are called by my name would humble themselves, pray, seek my face, turn from their wicked ways, then will I hear from heaven and hear their land. We need a healing right now. Father, we ask that you would touch hearts right now, touch hearts tonight, Father, that we would do those things that would be pleasing in thy sight. Father, this is our prayer tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
All active veterans and military, please render a proper salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we're gonna issue some proclamations. One declaring Hammond a Purple Heart City.
Mr. Albert Cusamano?
Mayor, speak into the mic so that you two can hear.
So Mr. Albert came to a meeting early on, asking if the city would consider declaring itself a Purple Heart City. And it didn't take much thinking to come to the conclusion that that was something that we really did want to do, and support you and your efforts and what you're doing. And hopefully down the road, we can find some donors, and we can get a plaque and place it somewhere as well. Or maybe you already have that in place.
I'm gonna present it to you all tonight, just to put up. You all can look at something bigger, somewhere else, like at the park, or Veterans Park Run or something, but for right now, to put up here at the City Council, at City Hall. This is from the Military Order of the Purple Heart, which is the organization that does the Purple Heart Cities, the Purple Heart City. Special recognition award is bestowed with pride to the City of Hammond, Louisiana, for your dedication and support honoring America's combat wounded veterans becoming the Purple Heart City. Presented by myself, the Deputy Coordinator of the Purple Heart Trail, Military Order of the Purple Heart USA.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Want to go ahead and read the proclamation? Thank you for your service, and for everyone, men and women, out there who serve our country. This is a proclamation declaring the City of Hammond a Purple Heart City. Whereas the City of Hammond, Louisiana, and our community have a great admiration and the utmost gratitude and respect for all the men and women who have and are en selflessly serving their country and this community and the armed forces. And whereas veterans have paid the high price for freedom by leaving their families and communities and placing themselves in harm way, for the good of all. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who serve the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas many men and women in uniform have given their lives while serving in the armed forces. And whereas citizens of our country have received the Purple Heart Medal as a result of being wounded while engaged in combat with the enemy force, construed as a singular meritorious act of essential service. Whereas the City of Hammond seeks to remember and recognize veterans who are recipients of the Purple Heart Medal. Therefore, it is resolved that the City of Hammond, Louisiana, to be proclaimed a Purple Heart City, honoring the service and sacrifice of our nation's men and women in uniform, wounded or killed by the enemy while serving to protect our freedoms. Now therefore, I, Pete Panapinto, Mayor of the City of Hammond, and Kip Andrews, Hammond City Council President, do hereby proclaim the City of Hammond a Purple Heart City in recognition of our community's Purple Heart Medal recipients. And witness whereof, I have here unset my hand and cause the seal of the City of Hammond to be affixed this 12th day of April, 2022. Signed, Kip Andrews, Mayor Pete Panapinto.
And I just wanted to say one other thing, I do have a lot of people here who have supported me and backed me in this. The Marshal, Pat Ferris, a veteran himself. Britton Sledge is here as well, as well as members of the VFW Auxiliary, their President, Junior Vice Commander of the VFW Post here in Hammond, as well as another member, John Alexander, who's a doctor, and he's our surgeon for the post. So I couldn't have done this without their support and their backing as well. So I want to thank them also very much.
And we also have a proclamation for the Rotary Club of Hammond. Whereas the Rotary Club of Hammond was chartered April 1, 1922, as part of the outreach of the Rotary Club of New Orleans, the 12th oldest Rotary Club and Rotary International. Whereas the Rotary Club of Hammond has faithfully followed the four avenues of service as proclamated by Founder Paul P. Harris on February 23, 1905, in Chicago, Illinois, USA, to wit to encourage and foster service in four avenues of activities. Club service, vocational service, community service, and international service. Whereas the Rotary Club of Hammond has faithfully and without interruption served the City of Hammond, Parish of Tangipahoe, and the Rotary District 6840 for 100 years, through the Great Depression, World War II, the Korean and Vietnam conflicts, Hurricanes Katrina and Ida, COVID and other national emergencies, trials and tribulations. Whereas the Rotary Club of Hammond has sought and gained outstanding leadership and service from the finest and most spirited leadership of Hammond's citizenry. Whereas the Rotary Club of Hammond has been true to the object of Rotary, to wit, to encourage and foster the ideal of service as a basis of worthy enterprise, to develop acquaintance as an opportunity of service, to promote high ethical standards in business and professions, to recognize the worthiness of all useful occupations, to dignify each Rotarian's occupation as an opportunity to serve society, to apply the application of the ideal of service to each Rotarian's life, to advance international understanding, goodwill, and peace. Therefore, in recognition thereof, of these many services and benevolences over a period of ten decades to the City of Hammond, the Office of Mayor of Hammond is pleased and proud to honor the Rotary Club of Hammond by proclaiming that this date, April 12, 2022, is Hammond Rotary Day in the City of Hammond.
All right. Next item on our agenda, I'm gonna call up the representatives from Entergy.
Thank you, Council President, Mayor Panapinto, and City Council for inviting Entergy to speak about the repairs and restorations that are associated with all the municipal streetlights across the City of Hammond. My name is Al Galindo, I am the Region Manager of Entergy Louisiana's Customer Service Group that covers the Hammond area. Also with me is our City of Hammond Customer Service Manager, Chris Hammonds, who works out of our Hammond office here, who you already know. It's been a long seven months since Hurricane Ida impacted the state and the City of Hammond. Just a quick restoration recap. We had historic damage, 30,000 poles, over 30,000 poles were damaged during the storm. That included many streetlights. That number of pole damage was double that of Laura, and more than Katrina, Ike, Delta, and Zeta combined. About 3% of all of Entergy Louisiana's poles across the state were damaged. We own roughly about 891,000 poles in Louisiana, and then about 240,000 poles are part of AT&amp;T and other providers. In the City of Hammond itself, we have 7,463 poles that we own in the city, and 1,796 are owned by other entities such as AT&amp;T. So within the City of Hammond, we have about 9,200 poles that we own. We weren't able to break down the damages specifically to the city, but overall in the parish, we had about 3,350 poles that were damaged in all of Tangipahoe Parish, which includes the City of Hammond. However, about 2,900 of those poles were in what we refer to as our Hammond network. So it would be the City of Hammond, City of Ponte Tula, Springfield, some of the outlying areas that are right outside of the city limits. So about 86% of the total damaged poles were just in this immediate Hammond network area. So after the storm, our priority was really to safely and quickly restore power as part of our response, which was then followed by permanent repairs, and also included surveying and removing debris, such as discarded poles and wires, while also working to follow environmental guidelines to remove transformers. So as you can imagine, it was a pretty long haul. We were essentially in a restoration mode, and with the streetlights, we still are, but essentially for restoring power to our customers from when the storm hit, all the way probably through the end of November. So we really did not have the opportunity to start making the repairs for any of the streetlights until that latter part of 2021. We transitioned to streetlight repairs as we began to see where the damages were. But one of the things that we didn't have was really an overall assessment of how many streetlights we had damaged in our service territory. So we conducted an overall assessment, basically from Grand Isle all the way up into this region, and found that about 46% of the streetlights that were indicated in our mapping system were damaged or not found, while we went out and did the assessments. So here in the City of Hammond, we bill the city roughly about 2,563 streetlights. That includes streetlights that Entergy owns, and that includes streetlights that the City of Hammond owns and maintains. We knew that we were gonna need additional resources in order to do the work. As you know, when a storm restoration response occurs, we bring in contractors, thousands of contractors, but the goal of the restoration is really to get the power back on to restore service to everybody's homes. And so the streetlights aren't essentially the priority at that time, because we're really trying to get the power back on. So we realized that we needed to bring additional resources after we did the assessment. And so we currently have existing, what we refer to as baseload contractors that are always repairing streetlights as part of their everyday responsibility. But we knew that we needed to add more contractors, so we sent out a request for proposal, and we ended up hiring two additional companies in our state to be able to help with the restoration of streetlights. And that really didn't start happening till about the beginning of February, where we were able to bring in the additional contractors. That doesn't mean that we weren't doing repair work, but the number of people that we had in order to be able to do the repair work didn't really come until the beginning of February. We have been working on streetlight repairs across our system, and we anticipate that we will have all of the repairs completed sometime in the middle of the second quarter. So we're looking about the middle of May. We've been working on all these streetlight repairs. There have been some challenges with materials, as you probably can imagine from a supply chain perspective. It hasn't stopped us from doing repairs, but in certain cases, it hasn't allowed us to do it as quickly as we would like to. It's not that we're not ordering the materials, it's just simply that the supply chain process has been slow. When we did the assessment and started to see how many streetlights we were missing, we began ordering materials back in November, December, because we knew that it was gonna be a large quantity of materials. So anyway, as it relates to specifically the City of Hammond, we've been working with the city, and I know through listings that they've given us of repairs that were needed in really high visibility or high hotspot areas, we've done about 140 repairs of 173 locations that the city has asked us to look at. In addition to the repairs that we've been doing, we're working with our customer service and operations teams also to identify any specific subdivisions where there are city-owned streetlights that need repair, so that the city organization can come in and put in the fixtures that they own. We knew there were some areas where there were gaps in us being able to provide the feed point to those streetlights. And so one of the things that we're asking, if there are still areas that need that, that please let us know, so that we can get our Entergy crews to go ahead and fix those services, so that the city will be enabled to make the repairs to their city-owned streetlights. One thing that I wanted to mention that is a part of our streetlight service, when I mentioned earlier that we always have contractors that are constantly doing repairs, the way the streetlight tariffs or the rates that we charge our municipalities are approved by the Public Service Commission, we have what we refer to as a 90% burn rate. So that basically means that about 10% of the time, you're always gonna have to be repairing streetlights. So in the cost that we provide to our municipal customers through the approved tariff, that's a caveat that I wanted to make sure you knew, that you'll probably never have, excuse me, 100% of the streetlights repaired at any given time. So I wanted to mention that. Another topic that I wanted to mention regarding streetlights is the LED conversion from non-LED to LED streetlights. That has been a question that has been raised by numerous parishes and municipalities, and it really relates to the differential in cost for an Entergy-owned municipal streetlight that is so much higher for LED lights compared to non-LED lights. As a matter of fact, for a 100-watt comparable fixture that is non-LED versus the same fixture that is LED, the way our tariffs were calculated, it's about $11 more a month for the LED fixtures. So that really prevents the municipalities from being able to convert to the LED fixtures. We are seeing it where the customers want to have that additional LED brightness that comes from that fixture. But we have escalated this to our Chief Customer Service Officer at Entergy, because we know that if we would have had LED fixtures in the field, they probably would have been more durable, and we wouldn't have had as much damage with our regular streetlights. The streetlights that you currently have now, the majority of them have lamps, covers, and it's just a lot of parts that really are hard to get. And so one of the action items that we've taken with our corporation is to go back to our regulatory team and to have them recalculate the cost for an LED streetlight, so that it's more commensurate with what the actual prices are in the marketplace. The current streetlight rates that are in effect right now were developed probably around the end of 2015. And in 2015, the manufacturers of LED fixtures were ramping up their production capacity at their factories in order to begin selling more of those units. Well, what's happened over the last six years is the capacity of production has increased for LED fixtures, which means the prices come down from an economic perspective. And then the actual cost of the non-LED fixtures is actually rising, because there's not as much demand. And I will just say that in the utility industry, we're always kind of like behind the curve when it comes to that sort of movement in the marketplace, just simply because we're regulated. And the first adapters or adopters of streetlights or of LED are the companies that want to put them in, because they know they're gonna save money. I will say that on our LED streetlight rate, you do see a savings on the energy component of the actual rate. But the actual base rate, which includes the initial cost of the fixture, the ongoing maintenance, any sort of replacement, that is the part that is the higher comparison to the non-LED light. So I wanted to provide the council with that information, because we know that going forward in the future, that will be a helpful mechanism for us to mitigate some of the issues that we were having with the streetlights that we currently have in place. The next item that I would like to cover regarding the streetlights is the bill credits. So we've been working with our billing office, and I did share with Ms. Lacey here, information that we have issued streetlight credits for the City of Hammond's accounts that goes back to September, where we provided a 100% credit for the amount of street back to September where we provided a 100% credit for the amount of streetlight bills that we provided. And then, for the remaining months, October, November, December, and January, we've issued a credit of 46% of what the streetlight bill was. So, that'll help offset some of those costs because the streetlight rate does not have a meter, it's un-metered service. So, it's just continuously billed on the customer's account unless we intercept that billing and then we issue a credit. So, that was something that I took responsibility for doing and initiated that for all of the municipalities, including the city of Hammond, on the streetlight rates. And we stopped the billing until all the credits were issued and they have been issued. So, now you'll start to see the reconciliation of the bills. And if there's any questions on the bills, we're certainly here to help answer those questions. I guess the last item that I wanted to cover, I know there were some areas that we internally had some concerns about having repairs made or installation of lights, and that's at Mooney Park. I know there were some questions about Mooney Park. I know we installed a new service for what I believe is for a concession stand. That meter was installed, when was that, Chris, last week?
March 29.
March 29, so that service is in there. But, there was also an action for Entergy to replace the existing non-LED lights to LED lights. And then, there was also a request from the city to increase the number of LED lights and that's currently in our engineering design group. And we've asked our operations team to go ahead and make the changes to the lights that are already there so that LED lights can actually be installed. And then, we'll come back and complete the remainder of the project, which would be to add additional lights. I think it was a total of 40 lights that are existing and then 20 new lights that are going to be added at Mooney Park. So, but I'm here, Chris and I are here to answer any questions that you may have. I will ask that, and we've been working with the city to do this, if there are any specific areas in your council districts that require immediate attention, please let us know through Chris Hammond's. We work closely with the city to ensure that we get that information and we have been responding. We just want to make sure that we get the information so that we can take care of it as quickly as we can. So, I appreciate all of your time and if you have any questions, we'll be happy to take them.
You made a comment about the pricing for the LED compared to the regular non-LED?
Correct.
Was done, I think, in 2014?
15.
15. When are y'all going to finish the evaluation on if it's, if the cost is going to actually go down for the?
We're actually, we actually got a commitment from our regulatory team to start that this summer.
Okay, so it'll probably be a few months, I guess, yeah.
Yeah, but the one thing that's good about the way we calculate our streetlight, it's an optional service, but we can go to the Public Service Commission and basically file a docket to say, "Look, we want to change the rates and here are the reasons why." We don't have to go through a general rate case. So, as soon as the commission reviews the costs associated and why we're trying to reduce the cost of LED fixtures, then they can basically go in and make a decision and approve it without going through a lot of hearings like you would on a regular general rate case. So, I'm anticipating that we will probably have some form of a decision. If we can get, the number crunching is not going to be hard. It's just making sure that we kind of follow the regulatory process. I would say before the end of the year, we'll probably have an answer. And then, part of the filing will include how would we implement that, you know, with all the municipalities? Because if there's a significant cost differential, then there's an incentive for all of us to work together to try to get as many of these lights converted as quickly as possible. It saves money on the municipal bill and then from Entergy's perspective, it reduces the ongoing maintenance that's associated with the streetlight.
And better lighting at the end of the day for everything, yeah.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other question for me to ask on the council?
I was waiting just to see who was going to say something, but see, they ain't going to say nothing. I heard you say you gave Hammond 100% of their money back.
For the month of September.
Okay, well, what about the residents that have lights and their lights been out?
That's a good question. If a customer has a private area light, that's one that's essentially like in their driveway or on a pole that's facing their home and it's on their residential or their commercial electric bill and those lights have been on, we don't really know that those lights have been damaged unless they report it. So, what we've been asking our customers to do is to actually initiate a request to have the light repaired on our website. And what we'll do after this meeting, we'll provide the link to the website. We feel it's a lot more efficient to ask for the repair in that manner than to call the call center. And once we get the repair ticket, that will allow us to hold that account and issue a credit back to the beginning of the storm and we'll issue the credit based on when the light is repaired. But, we need to know from the customer that that light was damaged in the storm. And so, we've been accumulating those requests for what we call night light out tickets for private area lighting services and we'll be more than happy to provide that link so that your constituents can know where they can report the light. It's a very simple process of reporting the light and then we have a record of it so we can then initiate the credit after the repair is made. So, it's really on us to make sure we get the repair made in a timely manner so it minimizes the credit, but if we don't do it, the customer gets the credit back to August 29th when the bill.
I personally did it in my office and they still haven't repaired the light, but I have gotten the credit. So, you just, you got to ask for it, yeah, through the website.
And like I said, you know, for the private area security lights, we really, I mean, we know they're out there, but we really don't know if they're not working or not unless the customer tells us. I hope that helped answer your question.
Yeah, that was part of it. Another thing that's been bothering me, we got $3 billion that Energy had and it look like we have to pay the bill now, right?
Are you referring to the storm costs?
Yes, sir, the storm costs, yes. $3 billion what we have to pay. And how much they going to add on to our bill a month?
The initial estimate that we got was about $8 a month and that's going to be for Hurricane Laura, Winter Storm Yuri, which was last February, and a portion of Hurricane Ida. I will say that Entergy has been working with our regulators and our federal delegation because we know that for electric companies that are not investor-owned utilities, so for example, electric co-ops, their storm restoration costs are reimbursed by FEMA. So, their members, their electric customers do not have to pay for any additional storm costs after a storm response. Because we're an investor-owned utility, there's a federal act called the Stafford Act that essentially states that an investor-owned utility, which is what we are at Entergy, we have the right to go back to our customers to request reimbursement for the cost of any storm restoration based on that state's regulatory body. So, here in Louisiana, it's the Louisiana Public Service Commission. So, when we go before the Public Service Commission, we have to show and demonstrate prudency in the manner in which we expended the dollars that were used for all of these storm restoration costs. One of the things that the state allows Entergy to do is a securitization, which really extends the cost of Entergy borrowing that money at a much lower rate. We have to pay all of our employees, our vendors, our contractors as the storm response is occurring. So, Entergy has to go out into the market and get that money in order to make those payments. But, part of the restoration offset cost process is to work with the state of Louisiana and the Louisiana Public Service Commission to keep that rate as low as possible over about a 15-year period. The other thing that I'll mention that we have done, which is really the first time in my career that I've seen it, is we went back to FEMA and we actually asked for grants of about $450 million that would include additional grid hardening projects that we have identified, eight projects across the state of Louisiana that we feel will have an impact on the viability of our electric system to withstand the sort of storms that we've been seeing over the last, you know, several years. And so, we know that, I mean, the way the regulatory process is set up for us to recover those costs, we have to go through a pretty diligent process to do that with our Public Service Commission. And it gets, I will tell you, it gets very heated. We have to demonstrate that we did spend the dollars in a prudent manner. And I think, you know, one of the feedbacks that I've heard is that, you know, we restored power in such a quick timeframe that a lot of people were, you know, really surprised how quickly it came in. But, that doesn't happen by accident. There's a lot of planning that goes into that, but obviously, there's a lot of costs. And so, what we're trying to do is help mitigate some of those costs that would impact our customers based on the huge impact of storm costs that we've had in the last two years.
Yeah, and I'm going to say it again, $3 billion, billions, not millions, that we have to pay back. And then, I'm listening to you, but I see y'all CEO, he get a bonus. And how much was the bonus?
I don't know about that.
I know, $4 million, that's how much bonus he got. And I'm saying this here because in my community, in my community, I have a lot of elders, they on a fixed income. And so, if you go up 10 cent, they going to call me. I got to go look at their bill and I don't know what made their bill go up. And so, in the process of doing some research, I was just reading it and I heard you talk about the lights, how many lights was out and how the city got they, they get a real, they get a refund, but I'm dealing with elders that don't know nothing about going on the computer. And so, that's what I'm dealing with and you know, I'm going to leave that alone, but it's, the community that want hurting. I'm saying, we got lights out. I heard you say Mooney Park, you know, and I know what that was about because once you say Mooney, that pole to perk me up, but it's hard to perk me up with so many other people down. And I stayed here through the storm and I weathered the storm and this the first time he been a city councilman dealing with the storm. And the other time, I was a citizen, so I had to hear every complaint, every problem, every limb fail. So, I went through the whole process, you know, me and some of the fellow city councilmen and Pastor Ron Matthews. So, those some of the things that we went through in our community. But, I'm looking at the billion, I just can't get out my mind, you know, how we the citizen end up eating a billion-dollar debt. And you sit here and tell me about the bond process and what y'all did, so looked like it was converted over to the residents having to eat it. Y'all didn't have to eat it, right?
Every customer, it doesn't matter whether it's a residential or commercial industrial customer, those costs are spread out across all customers that Entergy serves, not just residential. But, I mean, I understand what you're saying about the impact that it has on all of our customers.
Yeah, so, give me a number, how many lights you say was out in the city of Hammond?
We bill the city of Hammond about 2,563 lights, streetlights. That's both Entergy-owned and city of Hammond-owned. That's the total number of lights that we serve or we provide to the city.
And how many lights the child replaced or improved?
Well, we found through our survey that about 46% of the lights were damaged or not there. And so, one of the items that we're trying to reconcile with our operations team is to really kind of get a sense of how many more lights have actually repaired because they just basically started going out and doing repairs based on what they saw on the maps. And so, we need to get a little bit more information. The numbers that I shared with you, the 140 out of 173, those were actual streetlights that the city of Hammond brought to our attention and we've repaired 140 out of 173 that the city has given to us.
Okay, and this is what I'm concerned about and it's amazing, 173 lights and y'all repaired 140, but yet, and I know you don't have nothing to do with this, this is the city now, and yet, we still don't have no rights repaired in District 3. Yeah, I know this ain't got nothing to do with you, but he in the back, you know, because when somebody have a light out, they tell me to call his office and stuff. So, now, the problem I've been having, I've been going through Hammond and I don't know, ma'am, if you're aware of it, they had me to put pink ribbons on all the poles on Mooney Avenue. But, you know what color they are now? Yeah, they ain't pink no more. They done switched colors. And I even had, my wife, she had to meet with the engineer. So, what I'm saying is, it's amazing, we out here doing this work and it's not y'all now, this is the city. 173 lights, 140 repaired. Now, I can't wait till they tell me their location and I want to hear how many have been repaired in District 3. You know, this still the city of Hammond. It ain't no such thing as one district, two district. Downtown, uptown, it's the city of Hammond. And what I'm saying is, the city of Hammond, you going to have to do better. You know, the department head, he know who I'm talking to, he in the back. You know, we say these things and we do these things and yet, I'm looking, so I figure 30 lights must be still in District 3 that's haven't been repaired yet. So, that's what I'm looking at. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm talking to the city of Hammond now.
I wanted to ask, every time we would call for Energy to try to trim the limbs or cut the limbs off the lines, it is always pretty much, you know, unless it was literally hanging on it, breaking it, pretty much, they wouldn't remove any of the tree limbs. Have they changed any policies, you know, since the storm to improve, you know, flexibility on what they will cut and what they won't cut to prevent trees, vegetation falling lines? I'm sure that would have helped out tremendously throughout the storm, not having so much out at one time.
Right, I mean, we do have a full-time vegetation, we call crew, that crews that go out and observe areas that need to be trimmed back, you know, because you're right, the wind and the storm knocks branches down and that creates an issue. And I know Tangipahoe Parish has a lot of trees.
Yes.
I'm going to ask Chris real quick. Chris, any feedback from Jesse on the sort of things that they're doing?
No, but I can't get with all of the information.
Yeah, we can provide some more specific information. I mean, I know that the company does have, you know, a practice where we're constantly doing what we call tree trimming and we also work with the parishes and the cities to kind of make sure that we're getting to the areas that, you know, they're saying they're having issues with. So, we work collectively with them, but we can provide, I think, a little bit more granularity of what we're doing in the city of Hammond, our vegetation supervisors in the Hammond office, so we can get more specifics for this area if that will help.
Yeah, that would be great because it seems like it takes a while to get anything done when it comes to getting tree limbs cut or they'll come out maybe twice before you can actually get somebody to look at it again, to cut maybe a couple more. It just takes a good bit to get it accomplished. So, I didn't know if y'all may have improved that policy any or not since the storm.
You know, the one thing that we have done, and I think you may have seen some of that happen after the storm, you know, we're continuing to do reliability upgrade work. I know that when we do that, you know, we do have to do what we refer to as a planned outage, so we communicate to our customers, "Look, we're going to take the power out in this section for about six hours and this is what we're doing." I know we've shared some of that here in the city of Hammond on social media so that customers know what we're doing. You know, that's all part of our efforts to harden the grid and make sure that we have a more reliable system so that when we do have outages, we can, what we refer to sectionalize areas of our distribution system so that if one line goes down, it doesn't affect, for example, 1,000 customers. If it goes down, then we can begin to isolate or sectionalize the area where the damage occurred to minimize the number of customers that are impacted by an outage. And so, we've been doing that for the past probably three years and we continue to do that as a way to help to harden the grid. So, I hope that kind of helps too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've probably put about 40 or so ribbons on the last couple of weeks trying to get them back on for residents in my district. Chris has helped out trying to get them on, so I appreciate that. We've gotten a lot taken care of, so appreciate it.
And while you're still here, I got a lot of cable from the cable company to the tie-down cables, to Bell South, AT&amp;T. We got all these cables still hanging from the pole, going across the sidewalk, across the road. Who's supposed to take care of it? It's not, it's not the hot wires, it's the cable.
So, we've had other council members and parish officials in other areas actually send pictures and say, "Hey, can you guys check this out?" And a lot of times, there's, they initially think it's electric wires, but to your point, council member, if you would let us know, then we can share some of that information with the appropriate supplier. So, I mean, I've gotten information from various council members or parish officials for certain wires that they see, you know, "Hey, can you help us move this?" And we'll work with our AT&amp;T and Cox partners to make sure they get them. And we do work together to make those. And, and we do work together to make those, to take care of those issues. I will tell you, as part of our learnings from last year's storm, we've, we've gotten together even more with the AT&T and cable folks just to make sure that we have a better line of communication when it comes to restoration. Because a lot of times, we'll get a lot of what you're asking about during the middle of a storm. And then we have to try to figure out, okay, is it our stuff? Is it, is it their stuff? And if we have a picture, typically that helps us to better understand who we need to call to come out and get it removed. So.
Well, I know if you go down Mooney Avenue. So would I contact, uh, who I contact? 'Cause somehow, when I contact the city, the city, uh, they say they gonna do it or they gonna get somebody. So who I do, who I need to contact in y'all office?
Well, usually Chris, Chris is the customer service manager that you can reach out to. That's part of what she does in her role as a customer service manager.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna tell you this here, Ms. Chris, I don't know if you know anything about Hammond or not. Uh, Greenfield Baptist Church, over there where they exercise room at, they got about ten tie-down cables over there. It looks a mess. They everywhere. Then on Mooney Avenue, they got tie-down cables, uh, actually on my property, that looks a mess. Uh, down Mooney Avenue Street, uh, Monticello, she sent me, uh, some pictures. So, and this was going on. It's truly hard for me to go around the entire District Three, keep taking pictures and, and sending them. So I'd be more than glad, uh, happy if you can get somebody to ride the community and just see, you know. Uh, I was riding my bike this morning, cables all across the sidewalk, you know, and cut grass. And everywhere you look, you can see what people done dropped cable. And I'm dealing with a ride more. And you know what happened once the cable get up under there.
Right.
So tha- that's what I'm dealing with, you know, myself personally. Uh, but yeah, I know definitely we need that in District Three, the cables and stuff. So now I know who to contact. And so now I know who I can see about these lights in the community and why they not on now. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we gonna get her information before she leave tonight, huh? 'Cause a lot of times, uh, they say they gonna give us the information.
Oh, we'll get it to you.
Okay. And then before the meeting over, they be gone and I got to get up and run behind them.
No, no, no. We'll get it to you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
City Audit Report.
Council President, Council Members, Mayor, thank you for having me. I want to give you all a brief summary presentation, um, for the June thirtieth, 2021 financial statement audit. Um, my name is Michelle Treshwig. I'm the partner for the audit. And this is my colleague, Chris Bro. He is the manager in charge. He'll be running the, uh, presentation for me. Thank you. Okay. Uh, first and foremost, I want to congratulate you guys. Um, it was a great year, um, year ended 2021. Um, the first slide is the summary of the auditor's results. Um, with IDA, we received an extension to submit to Legislative Auditor for January thirty-first. We did submit on January twenty-eighth. The audit has been reviewed and approved and is now available for public inspection on their website. The type of report issued on the basic financial statements was an unmodified opinion, which is the, uh, clean opinion, which is the best opinion that you guys can have. The report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters based on an audit of financial statements in accordance with governmental auditing standards or what we call GAS. There was one finding, which is significant deficiency related to the financial reporting in accordance with GAAP and GASB. GAAP is the, um, generally accepted accounting principles. And GASB is the Government Auditing Standards Board. This is a very common finding for governmental entities and it does not affect the city's status with the Legislative Auditor or any state or federal funding. And I expect that finding to go off probably in the next, um, year or so. Uh, you had no material weaknesses and you had no non-compliance, which is material to the financial statements. For the year end 2021, we did not have to perform any statewide agreed-upon procedures. Uh, the Legislative Auditor has reinstated those. Uh, so for year end 2022, the city will undergo the statewide agreed-upon procedures. And also for year end 2021, there was no single audit required. There were no federal expenditures that were over the threshold of seven hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, next slide. Now, the numbers that are in these next several slides can also be found in your management's discussion and analysis, which is pages four through fourteen. Um, the first slide is the year-to-year comparison, government-wide. As you will notice, your total assets increased, um, a little over eight million, eight and a half million. Your total liabilities increased four point seven. Total net position increased almost seven million. Your total revenues, three point eight. And the total expenses went down seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand. The change in net position was about four point six million. Your total assets increased mainly because of the increase in revenues, the increase in your sales tax. And also you guys received about two point six million of recovery funding, um, through the American Recovery Act, which also, in return, it increased your assets, but it also increased your liability because we had, we put it in unearned income because it had not been spent yet. So you had it as restricted. So that also put it into liabilities. And also the increase in your liability is related to, we had to implement what they call GASB eighty-three. And this is regarding your, um, certain asset retirement obligations. And this is related to the assimilation sites and to the wastewater. And this was new for this year and it had to be implemented. And that caused about a two million dollar liability on the water and sewer side. There's no, um, cash going out or anything. It's very similar to your pension expense when we had to record your pension liability on the books. Okay? Um, the net position, seven million. That's outstanding. Um, that has a lot to do with your sales tax. And then your expenditures going down. Any questions on that slide? No? This is your revenue comparison, um, to, of all the top revenues. This is also in the MDNA. As you note, your sales tax from last year to this year increased. Now, this is also, I want to go back. This is on the government-wide financial statements. So this is a full accrual basis, okay? Not your governmental fund basis. This is the full accrual. Your sales tax increased over four point seven million dollars. Ad valorem also increased. The next one that I want to point out was a decrease. And that was in your capital grants and contributions. Um, you all finished some major projects in prior year, which were the airport and the CDBG. So you did not receive as much federal funding, which is understandable. And that's why you did not have a single audit, because the expenditures were under the seven fifty. Okay? Um, this, this slides will, you know, you all will have these and y'all can always, um, contact me if you have questions and stuff. And again, this information is in your MDNA. Okay. Do you want to move? Okay, next slide. This, I decided to put the information as a bar graph so that you all could take a look at it as compared to last year. And this is just representative of the balances and the numbers that you had on the previous slide. That's just the first one. Go ahead and go to the second one. And as you can see, and okay, this is the, the next slide that we have is the expense comparison for 2021 to 2020. This is also on a government-wide basis. This comes out of the information in your MDNA. And you will notice that, um, a lot of the expenditures did decrease. For governmental activities, your expenditures, I think, increased about sixty-two thousand dollars, which is phenomenal. And the big decrease came in the water and sewer, on the water and sewer side. That's what caused the seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand, um, decrease overall. Next slide. Uh, this is a, a brief discussion about the general fund and the sales tax fund. Since the general fund is your chief operating fund, um, it's very important. The fund balance increased almost one point two million, leaving an ending balance of about four point, well, four point, I'm gonna say four point two. Um, in prior years, I've also discussed this. The Government Finance Officers Association, or the GFOA, recommends that a general-purpose government at least maintain two months of your regular general fund expenditures. Um, for you guys, this would be about four point three million. As you can see, you're very close to that amount this year. And it has been growing. I have a slide that'll show that, um, next slide. Um, I wanted to mention the sales tax fund balance increased four point five million, leaving an ending balance of about five point five. Your collections increased approximately four point eight million or twenty-three percent from prior year. Next slide. Okay. This is the comparison, and I did it for five years for you guys. Um, this shows the general fund balance going up and the GFOA recommendation. And this shows how hard you guys have worked on improving that fund balance. As you can see, for 2021, you're almost there. And we, that's five years ago. And it's grown significantly. And that's really good. It's a good, strong financial background there. And then this is your sales tax fund collection over the last five years. Um, 2021, you know, four point, what did it say, four point six, four point seven million increase. And the prior years, very kind of consistent, a little bit of increase here and there. And in summary, I want to just say, the audited financial statements, like I said, received an unmodified and clean opinion. Your net position increased almost seven million. The general fund saw an increase of about one point two million. Your sales tax fund, four and a half million. And I do recommend, since a lot of this information is in the MDNA, go take a look at that MDNA because it will also give you details about the differences between prior year and current year, any of the current activities, where capital projects that were completed, um, any key factors or information for next year as well, well, this year now, um, as well. Anybody have any questions? It was a very great, very, very good year for the city of Hammond, year end 2021. Okay. If, if no questions, I just want to say.
No. Yes, ma'am. No, I have questions. I be trying to wait, see if somebody else gonna say something. Uh... So this, y'all actually don't do this? So y'all hire somebody else to do this? Or you all doing this?
The MDNA?
Uh-huh.
Well, the MDNA is management's discussion analysis. We will drop the numbers in. And then Lacy writes up with help the, um, financial highlights and the information on the variances and anything like that.
And for the record, for, uh, how much do y'all charge a year to do this?
We normally charge around fifty thousand dollars, um, for the actual audit. And then SAUPs are also an additional. And then we have non-atest services and stuff as well.
Okay. And when y'all contract is up?
It is up to now. This was our last year on the last contract.
And how long y'all been working for the city of Hammond?
We first started, I want to say the audit was in 2011.
That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
So, um, Tracy Washington, well, six ten, Mooney Avenue. Um, hello, President, Council, everyone in the room. You mentioned that, um, I'm reading on page one-ten, having looked at the entire thing, just pulled it up online. Um, management is responsible for developing internal controls related to the preparation of financial statements, as well as preparing financial statements in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America, GAAP. You said that is a significant deficiency, but I didn't hear you elaborate. I mean, I hear you telling the council to go back and read. But as a public citizen, I'm not sure what that means. So can you expand on that, please?
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay. Um, and a lot of entities, while they can maintain their books and their financial records and they record everything in their systems, um, they don't necessarily have the knowledge to, to prepare their financial statements in accordance with GAAP or with the governmental auditing standards. So the city had this before when we came on board. They have a system that they can use. Their accounting system does this. So when we came on board, we had made the recommendation to get some more training through the Legislative Auditor's Office, through the GFOA, so that there was a better understanding on how to present your financial statements in, in accordance with GAAP and in accordance with the GASB standards. So that they could review and that they could give us some more of their information. Well, as you're aware, the, the prior finance director, we should say, the left, and we have some new individuals in place. They are now undergoing that training. So eventually, within, I'm thinking next year or so, they will have that knowledge to be able to utilize, to be able to review the financial statements and the reporting in accordance with GAAP and understand what is, you know, going on with that. It's a significant deficiency. A lot of entities have this finding. It's a very common finding. Um, they hire the auditors to prepare the financial statements uh, because they just don't have that knowledge to actually prepare this in accordance with the governmental auditing standards and with, um, GAAP. Does that, does that help? Okay.
Yeah, 'cause I had met with you, uh, before. I don't know if you remember me or not. Uh, I had met with you before.
Yes.
I had, we had set up a meeting with you.
Yes.
Uh, and I'm gonna tell you this here, I truly don't understand. And I'm not gonna sit here and act like I understand. But, uh, one of the biggest issue that I had, that I said, I just don't trust people when it come to money. And I don't know if you remember, I said it, but that's what I said. And still to this day, I still don't trust people when it come to the taxpayers' money. Because, uh, some of the things that we asked for and what we was looking for, we was looking to, uh, tell us what was going on with the accounts. And I know you don't have nothing to do with this on a quarterly base. And yet, we still yet to receive this and, uh, speak about it, just like you standing up there, not send me paperwork because you can send me all this here you want. I truly don't understand it because, uh, I had to get on my wife when I look at the account, the bank account and ask her what happened to this money and that money. So now that I'm over the city money, I need more help now. And, and I can't even receive that. This here dealing with, this dealing with the city now, it's not having nothing to do with you. That even asking for that on a quarterly base, and what need to be said is, it's the taxpayers' money. The taxpayers need to know where their money is being spent from dollar to dollar, from cent to cent. Because we do the sales tax and, and we all know, you know, Hammond been doing pretty good for the last, uh, couple of months. But we, and I'm gonna say, I can't even say we, I gotta say me now. I still have nobody to explain to me how much money is being spent here, how much money is being spent there. Not me by myself. I want you to stand up before the public and say it. I don't need you to call me to the office and show me a sheet that, that might not even be the same sheet I'm looking at now. So that's what I say. So I'm one of the ones still have a problem with trust dealing with the city.
So that's why we did provide the budget-to-actual report that shows what has been spent. It matches your budget binder in terms of all the line items that you see. It's formatted in the same way that your budget binder is formatted so that you can see expenses up to date and then what's remaining and then any overages. All of that was in that report. I think what you're asking for is a more detailed presentation. And now that we know you would rather have a more detailed presentation at the podium, we can provide that. What was requested earlier was some very detailed reports and those have been provided as requested.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda, I need an approval of our Minister of March eighth meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Debitario?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Hi.
Councilman Le- Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Aye.
Final adoption of ordinance, old business, not new business.
Final adoption of an ordinance to amend UDC number 8 to add a suburban highway overlay district, SH, to allow for new development to fit within the context of the proposed overlay district, Z-2019-11-0015. Jeffrey?
And this is just for the final consideration of a final adoption for the suburban overlay district that we had discussed during the public hearing. If there's any additional questions, I will take.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Let me just make clear for the, for the motion, as it's the, you recommend, or you making the motion second to adopt this as recommended by the city planner, right?
Right. The 85 feet, the one that is, that is attached by the link here. Yes, that's the motion.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
All right, final adoption, number two.
Final adoption of an ordinance to grant an expanded conditional use ECU on a lot being 0.407 acres in accordance with a survey by William J. Bodine Jr. dated 2/9/22, requested by Anthony and Joyce Cox, located at 1106 South Pine Street, Z-2022-02-00098. Jeffrey Lewenberger?
And this is consideration for the final adoption of the expanding conditional use at, I lost the address on that. At 1106 South Pine, could not recall that. 1106 South Pine by Anthony and Joyce Cox for the duplex with the residents on one side and her running her business on the other.
Any question from anyone else? Anyone from the audience?
Yeah, one question. It was brought to my attention about the parking, about the parking over there, but they say the parking is more than enough parking. I talked to the planning commission, one of the planning commission, he said they got more than enough parking in that area for this.
We haven't got any site plans or anything for, for this yet, but yeah, they would have to provide that.
Yeah, but he told me they had way more than enough, and I just wanted to make that clear and on the record.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Final adoption number three.
Final adoption of an ordinance to annex Ferris Family LLC property being a 0.181 acre portion of tract A-1 per survey by David Patterson, PLS dated 2/2/2022, located at 2307 West Thomas Street, to be zoned, CH, and is in the City Council District 4.
And this is just for the consideration of approval for the annexation of the public hearing that we had just held for a portion of that tract off of West Thomas Street and 2307 West Thomas Street.
Any question from anyone on the council? Anyone from the public? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Resolutions, old business, none, new business.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to renew insurance coverage for the City of Hammond for the period of May 1st, 2022, to April 30th, 2023. Don Steele?
Steele, yes. Don Steele, Steele Insurance, 118 Southwest Railroad Avenue. Pleased to be here with y'all tonight. Again, you, you have your copies, I would gather, on, on your.
They're on there.
Again, this year, we're, we're gonna present the, propose the Travelers Insurance Company for the commercial package policy. That would be the general liability, the automobile, except for the fire units, the public officials, law enforcement liability. I won't bore you by going line by line, but I want to point out the major changes that we have. The self-insured retention on the commercial automobile is going from 100,000 to 150,000. The next best we got was 250,000, so.
That was for automobiles? That went up for the automobiles?
For the automobile only.
Okay, all right. Was there a factor, was there?
100,000 SIR that we've had, the self-insured retention that we've had.
Was there a contributing factor for that, or the increase?
Oh, yeah, because loss ratio.
Okay, a what now?
A loss ratio currently?
Okay.
Yeah, 192%.
Okay.
Just for the last two years. The commercial package premium is 489, 282. We did get an optional quote from Munich Reinsurance Company, but it's an all lines, 250,000 SIR. To save 53,000 wouldn't make much sense for the city. And then we have the fire units only that are separated from the rest of the commercial automobiles, and they're actually down a little bit at 55,132. The workers' compensation, we have optional quotes. The expiring carrier is Safety National, that was, that came in at 200,000. We're gonna propose that we move to Midwest Indemnity. The retention is gonna be a million. The coverage is a million with a 750,000 self-insured retention, and that would move to Midwest Indemnity. The last one, again, you're not saving enough to have police and fire to million dollar retention. So, and that seems to be a lot of our claims with the police department. The airport liability is as expiring. Their offer is a three-year lock-in for the premium of 13,233 per year. You have your blanket bond, revenue supervisor's bond, and the workers' comp bond. Property and equipment. We have two alternatives here. We have 1% wind deductible, and we have a 2% wind deductible. Again, to save 18,000, I wouldn't go to a 2% wind deductible on 36 million of exposure. That would be 700,000 versus 300,000 wind deductible. Values are up by 6 million, was 6.5 million. And for a comparison point, our comparison is 877 last year to 907 this year. Workers' comp being our saving grace, because it came down from 206 to 135. That's on your last page. And I'll open up any questions you may have.
Any question? Anyone from the public? Pleasure of the council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Just to be clear, that's in accordance with the recommendation of Mr. Steele, right? The policies and with coverages that he's recommended?
That is correct.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Resolution number two.
Resolution to ratify and award bids received 4/7/2022 for canal improvements fiscal year 2022, project number 420-12206, Webb Anderson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As you can see in your hyperlink bid summary, we received three bids. This is for the canal improvements at Natchez and Skinner, intersects Natchez and Skinner. The base bid was for concrete lining the bottom of the channel and sidewalls of the channel, and the alternate was for replacing the crossing under Natchez, which was deteriorated, it's old metal pipe, and we were gonna put in a concrete box covert. Low bid is KCR Contractors, an amount of 230,813.31. And their alternate was, or with the, with the alternate, it was 469,221.62. We've worked with them before. I think we originally had 250,000 total budgeted, but as with everything else that we've been bidding, the budgets are over a year old and everything has doubled. So your total contract budget, project budget with all fees and testing lab services contingencies, we're looking at 295,000 if you awarded the base bid. That's total. And then if you, and then with the alternate, we're looking at 565,000.
How much is budgeted for this?
So there's 250,000 budgeted for it?
Total.
Total. If you want to award the base only, you will need to only be able to award contingent on moving money to fund the remainder of the project. So if you wanted to, and we have over 7 million in the sales balance, but if you wanted to fund just the base bid only for the total contract, for the construction contract and for the engineering side, you would need to move 45,000 from the fund balance. That's written on your sheet that we just passed around. If you wanted to fund the entire project, which is the base plus the additive alternate for that extra work, then you're gonna need to move 315,000 from the fund balance.
Can you explain what the alternate is and why it's needed? What is the extra?
Originally, we were, Councilman Wells and some residents right there, and then it was, the side, sides of the channel were deteriorating.
Right.
So originally, the project was to line the channel, they have some concrete there, was to extend it. And then that was when we did the original budget. Well, after, a year later, after we originally looked at it, I think Councilman Wells even went out there with me, and the, the metal pipe that's underneath Natchez is deteriorating, just like a lot of other ones, but, and he requested we put it in, so we did it as an alternate.
It's a drainage pipe?
It is.
Okay.
There's two existing metal pipes, we're gonna replace it with one concrete box covert underneath. Six by eight.
No, say, say it like it is now.
With concrete.
Yeah, say it like it is. We looked at it, and we saw it need to be replaced, right? So we said, we're gonna do the canal, we might as well do all of it at one time, because I was with you, you and I was together, and then me and Chuck ended up talking later on. He didn't know nothing about the, the bridge, or the coverts was deteriorated, so he didn't know that. So when we was together, and we said, we're gonna work on it, we might as well do everything at one time, since they gonna be in the area.
I remember that conversation, and I think Chuck, I think Chuck was aware, but when we originally set the budget, it was to line the channel for the side of the street, a road and that, and then when we met out after that was already appropriated, we looked at and saw the, and saw the pipe out there.
Okay.
It was 250,000 originally, y'all budget, okay.
We're lining the channel. And actually, it included some work on Arnold's Creek.
Yeah.
But the prices have.
Doubled, yeah, went up.
More than doubled.
Yeah.
Everything we're bidding is coming in.
So, so the bid, the base bid was 238 by the KCR. The alternate would add, was adding all additions that y'all talked about, and that was 469?
Actually, 230,813.31. And that's total is 469,221.62.
And then also, what we did, we had took money away from the canal that need to be fixed on Coleman Street, am I right?
Arnold's.
Huh?
Arnold's Creek, right.
Yeah, well, yeah, well, you know, you know the creek, I know the name of the street. Yeah, and so.
I know the streets too.
Okay, well.
We called it the Arnold's.
Yeah, what I'm saying.
From Coleman to Florida.
Yeah, in your budget, it's gonna show as Arnold's Creek. And then this one shows as Natchez-Skinner. There was originally 100,000 appropriated for Natchez-Skinner. There was 150,000 appropriated for Arnold's Creek. These were billed as the canal improvements as a total project. Councilman Wells requested for that, as he just stated, for that other part to come out so that it could be replaced with these additional improvements.
When the number started going up to increase the lining project to cover larger area.
The drainage underneath the alternate, so that's a, I mean, is that a high-flow area for drainage?
Yes.
I mean, I'm just not familiar with what drains there and how bad of a situation it currently is, so I'm just trying to get the understanding of how desperately it needs to be done, just so we understand what we're, what we're talking about.
Oh, it desperately need to be done, it's pretty much like when we first got in office, and we did that, I'm gonna say canal again. Now you tell me the name of the street, the one in your district, Ms. Carly, the one we did.
Hazel Street Canal, yeah.
Between Hazel and.
The Hazel Street. So it's pretty much, it's pretty much, that's how I suppose, that's how I suppose it look. I assume, pretty much like that, but the coverts under the street, we saw that they was bad. So that's what we, that's how I suppose it look when it's all done. It definitely supposed to be concrete on the wall, right?
Yes, we have a concrete bottom and concrete walls.
Okay.
Not gonna look exactly like the one we did Hazel, there wasn't enough space in between the road and the neighbor. So it's gonna be vertical walls and a concrete bottom, but it serves the same purpose.
Yeah, and it's only going on one side, it's not going on both?
Both sides, we've got, we're extending the side that is already lined, I think 40 feet, and the other side's gonna match, the side next to Skinner, that is most important. Important, because the street, that all arose on the side of that street.
So see, that, that's why I say, now you really got me confused now, because when we talk, we talking about on one side.
No, we talked, we're going to a certain point, in order to get to that point, we had to extend the other side.
Okay.
The north side, like 40, I think it's around 40 feet.
So it gonna be 40 feet to the, uh.
100 on the south side.
So, no, 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 on the south side.
I have those numbers with me.
Yeah, on the south side, it should be 40. On the north side, it should be 100, because on the south side, no one stay on the south side.
There's a street on the south.
Yeah, they got a street on the south side.
So we're going, I think it's 180 or 100 feet from where it starts at the crossing. 100 feet on one side, where we spoke about stopping the project, and in order to get to that point, we're extending the north side to the back of that gentleman's property to match that same, same location.
Okay, all right, so we're not going.
And I apologize, I guess I had your old number, I wanted to discuss this with you and meet you out there.
Yeah, but we can't discuss nothing on a Tuesday though, because Tuesday I got deal with the council meeting.
I tried to call you yesterday, I just didn't realize it was.
Oh, yeah, so, yeah, I definitely don't wanna talk on no Tuesday. All right. So the total of the project is 565,000?
Total project budget, but if you were gonna move on the base bid and the alternate, you would be awarding for 469,221.62 tonight, contingent on moving money.
Councilman Wells, you're correct. The total project budget for the construction and the engineering, you're correct. It's 565, that's why we're saying that we. It's five sixty-five, that's why we're saying that we need to move three hundred and fifteen thousand.
I'm saying, you got one of these sheets in front of you?
Yeah, that's what I just read.
Okay, yeah, cuz no, cuz I'm looking at one thing and you giving me another.
No, I said the total project budget is five hundred sixty-five thousand dollars with everything.
Okay.
But your action right now would be to award for four hundred sixty-nine thousand, two hundred twenty-one dollars and sixty-two cents.
Okay.
Then you would have to move
The construction contract.
That's this item.
That's, that's what you're, yeah, that's what you're potentially voting on right now would be to award the construction contract. And we would do it contingent on the approval of moving money from the fund balance into into the project. So under introduction of an ordinance later, we'll amend the agenda if that's the council's pleasure to move the three hundred and fifteen thousand from the fund balance into the project, to make it go. It would then have to come to the next meeting for a public hearing and final approval, since we're moving money from the fund balance into a project.
My, I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to totally understand here. I knew the idea of doing the canal like it is on Hazel Street. That was in the plan and that was in the budget, um and we're a little over budget just to do that. What I'm confused about is the alternate. That wasn't originally part of the plan, right? So this would be
Standing there and we
Right, no, I get that, I get that, but how, how dire is that? There are a lot of things in the city that need work, um three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars worth of work. How, how necessary is it that it needs it so bad right now, we need to do it? I'm not saying we're not, I'm just, it's a new thing that's being brought up.
It will start causing problems with the street.
Okay.
And the right time to do it would be while you're doing
While you're doing the other things, okay.
Cuz it all will tie in together with a head wall, concrete head wall next to the street and put the crossing in.
Okay, I, this, I feel like this is kind of new information, I know it came to us, but I didn't really understand the, I mean, the alternate is over the original budgeted, original item, so.
It's expen- I mean
Yeah.
Everything's up right now.
And I guess that's to my point, is how, how badly is it needed that we need to do it while everything is expensive?
Hydraulics wise, what was there was undersized and it needs a six by eight concrete box. Because if you put more pipes without the cover, you gotta get wider than the channel and it doesn't work. That's where that came from.
I'm just considering, you know, capital improvement projects that we have that wait multiple years for three hundred and sixty thousand. I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, I just something at least needs to be discussed and, and made sure we're all aware. You know, we're putting a lot of extra money into a project that's very much needed and that's fine.
That's up to y'all.
Right.
It can, could it wait a couple of years? Probably so, I mean, that's up to y'all, but it, it's the street is not, does not have, it's not caving in right now, but the pipe is rusted out.
So while we in the area, I'm gonna suggest we do the work.
I agree. You're in the area, the equipment's already been staged there, it's needed. We have the funds, we should do it.
All right, so what do we need to do here? Let's see.
So what you would be approving is the construction contract with that four hundred sixty-nine thousand, two twenty-one and sixty-two cents. But it would be contingent on approval of the funding of the budget amendment, that would probably be the best way to say that, contingent on the budget amendment.
Okay.
Who's the contract, who's the contractor again, Webb?
KCR Contractors. LLC.
Anyone from the public? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion.
So let me just
Make a motion to approve contingent on budget.
For clarity, the award is gonna be recommended, the award to the low bidder, right, KCR Contractors, uh the base bid and the alternate, four hundred sixty-nine thousand, two hundred twenty-one dollars and sixty-two cents, contingent upon moving the uh three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars from the fund balance to the, to this project.
Yes, yes, second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Thank you.
So well, for the future, man, you kinda see how confusing it can be right now, huh?
I'm not confused.
Yeah, I know you're not confused, but I'm, I'm a little confused, I know you good, yeah. But the problem is, I wanna feel like you, even though it's going in the district, a- and I mean it. I still wanna have a good understanding, because if it's one dollar, two dollars, I still wanna be able to explain what's taking place. And that's why I say that, so for the future, we're not gonna wait till the last minute and you call me on a Monday.
We just got the bids.
Okay.
That's what
Okay, yeah, you're not confused, but I wanna feel like you feel, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution number three?
A resolution accepting a four hundred thousand dollar grant from the Love Louisiana Outdoors Program for improvements to Martin Luther King and Zemurray Parks, authorizing in-kind match in the form of project program design, engineering and or administration by grants department staff and authorizing the mayor or his designate to complete and sign the related documents, Charles, Charles Boucher.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um let me say first that I don't often get to stand up here and ask you guys to accept over half a million dollars in grants, but I have the pleasure of doing that tonight, so starting with this one, um a few council meetings back, I actually presented a housekeeping resolution related to this application, it was still in the application stage at that point. Um on March thirtieth, we received an award letter indicating that we had got the money, four hundred thousand dollars, no cash match involved, uh to make these improvements to Martin Luther King and Zemurray Parks. Um the agenda does have a hyperlink, I think it's attachment two, which shows sort of some of our preliminary drawings for what we're planning to do in both parks and um we're asking you to accept that grant award tonight, so that when the contract arrives, we can go ahead and execute it and hopefully get started on that project sooner than later. Um and I'm here to answer any questions you guys may have.
Anyone from the public? Anyone from the council?
I will say, um great job and congratulations on getting that grant. You guys do a, a wonderful job in the grants department. Finding ways to fund great projects.
Thank you, I will definitely share that with the team.
Thank you. Any other comment from the council? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Resolution number four?
A resolution accepting a two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar grant from the capital outlay program for roadside drainage improvements in the Ruth Mitchell Pine Drive subdivision in District One and along Old Covington Highway between Range Road and Fern Street in District Two, approving a cash match of seventy-five thousand dollars from the Grant Match Fund and authorizing the mayor and his designate to complete and sign related documents, Charles.
This is one that, this request actually went in in late twenty twenty, um so we've been waiting for a while for the grant contract to arrive. We did find out last year around, around July or August that we had received fu- or approval for funding, um but we've been waiting since then for the grant contract, which we just received, so we're asking the council to accept this. There is a seventy-five thousand dollar cash match, which would come from the Grant Match Fund, that's a twenty-five percent match of total project cost of about three hundred thousand.
Question with this, you always hear about the, uh, the state giving out money and, and everybody sitting around waiting for it for a long time, so this money is ready to be given to us? Or we're gonna be waiting?
No, we've waited for it for the last year or so.
Oh, great.
Yes, it, the, the, it goes before the state bond commission, they've approved um the funding. Um so now it's a state bond that's been issued, um and then we're able to accept um the grant award, so we can get started.
Great.
Once we accept the, uh, once we accept the funding, how long do we have before we have to start?
I don't know that there's a hard and fast, like deadline for us to start work. Capital outlay is one of those programs that's expected to take a while, because these are capital outlay projects, they're large, large projects. Um the funding cycle itself takes a while and then once we've executed the contract, it needs to be executed by the state, that could take, it could take a month, it could take three. Um we'll be assigned a program manager at the state, I'll need to coordinate with that person on plans and designs, get them to approve those. Um i- it, it's kind of a slow process. Um the earliest likely that we could look at starting this is probably six months from now.
So I recognize both of these projects from our capital outlay, uh five-year plan, and so um we have already, we had budgeted this out of our, our, our city dollars, right, so technically, this is crediting that.
So yes. My understanding is that the Ruth Mitchell Pine Drive project is budgeted now and that the cu- the Old Covington Highway project has not been budgeted yet, but may be in the budget for this coming, this year.
It's in, yeah, a coming year.
Um so the way this typically works is we look at that five-year capital plan and we try to look at, is, is there a capital outlay that we could potentially use to supplement what is budgeted or even best case, take the place of city funds that haven't been budgeted yet, they're, they're projected to be budgeted, you know, three years from now. Um and like I said, we typically will start this process early, because it'll take a while. Um so we were fortunate, we had two projects submitted in twenty twenty, the other one was the hangars out at the airport, that one was funded last year, um actually funded, um this one was just funded this year.
Great. Again, good job. Congratulations and thank you to the staff.
Maybe prices will go down.
That would be great. All right, anyone else from the public? Okay, pleasure of the council.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Resolution number five?
A resolution supporting the submission of a grant application for twenty-three thousand dollars to the Community Water Enrichment Fund for automatic water monitoring treatment, equipment for city water wells, Charles.
This is one that um we're able to apply for every year, um the last couple of years, it's been a much smaller amount, I think last year it was around sixty thousand dollars that the parish received and then had to divide up among the various entities in the parish that can apply. Um this year, that amount is closer to a hundred fifty thousand dollars, uh both for this program and for the next one on the agenda. Um so our allocation would be approximately twenty-three thousand dollars, and that's giving everybody in the parish a little bit of that hundred fifty. Um we'd be using this to install um automatic monitoring equipment at our city water wells. Um I talked with Guy Palermo, one of him that kind of explained to me how this works, basically um right now, we do manual testing daily at our water wells. The automatic equipment would allow us to test water quality in intervals as, as little as ten seconds. Um and if there's an issue, an alarm gets sent to our um automatic monitoring equipment um so that they can respond to it um immediately.
Who monitoring the equipment?
This would be the water and sewer department.
Okay, what equipment is located at?
This is the, the water wells, the major water wells for the city. We're gonna try to do this in all five.
All right.
Any question from anyone from the public? Anyone else from the council? Pleasure of the council.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Resolution number six?
A resolution supporting the submission of a grant application for twenty-three thousand dollars to the local government assistant program to purchase security cameras for city parking malls, parks and other public spaces, Charles.
This is largely in response to some of the discussion we've heard at some of our recent council meetings about wanting to have more security for our downtown area and our parks, maybe some other public buildings. Um this opportunity came along, like I said, every year we're able to apply for these funds. Um equipment is an eligible category, so we confirm with them that cameras are considered equipment and would be eligible. So we're proposing to use these funds to, to make those purchases.
Now, wh- what parks are included in this? Is it all the parks are, are?
I think that's still to be determined, um as we're fleshing out the grant application. I know there's already some money that's been allocated for cameras in some of the parks. Um my understanding is that we'd be looking at supplementing those with, with this funds, and then I know that the parking malls downtown, the parking areas downtown have been another area where we've um heard requests for, for security, additional security cameras.
I just wanna make sure Jackson Park has, has something for cameras on there, so if we need to break that up twenty percent per district or whatever we need to do, I wanna make sure that we have some cameras backed at a park that's tucked away with one way in and one way out, so however we need to do, make sure that Jackson Park has some, some money for some cameras.
And when was this grant applied for?
It's not been applied for yet.
Okay, and you know, it's, it's funny and I guess it's a good funny. You know how long I've been talking about cameras? And look like wasn't nobody hearing what I was saying. And now I see everybody into cameras, you know, cameras, uh, and I'm gonna say downtown, cuz I've been wanting to get to this anyway. When they had the fighting downtown, when they had the shooting downtown, and this what I did, on a Thursday night at twelve o'clock, police on motorcycles, police with the blue light showing. It was a good night, it was a safe night. And I say this here, because this is all I've been asking for in District Three. Police on motorcycles, cameras in the park. I ain't heard about no more shooting downtown. Yet we still experiencing shooting in District Three. And yeah, I thank you for working on this here, for making downtown safe, but I think we really forget that District Three is a part of Hammond too. And if I don't say nothing, from the lighting to, to everything, you know, that look like, I don't know, look like if, if District Three not a part of Hammond, seem like we need to separate ourselves, cuz we're not getting none of these here that everybody else getting. Uh the cameras, yeah, we getting the cameras installed in the park now. But I'm just saying, it, it's amazing how everything come up, I bring it up and don't nobody speak about it. But now we see the benefits of, of having cameras, just cuz I wanna go, I wanna take my wife downtown, I wanna take my friends downtown, but I wanna feel safe where I stay at too. And I know you don't have nothing to do with that, that's from the cameras to the lighting, so I'm always, until you get tired of it, until you just start ax- until you start doing what I asked for, I'm gonna continue to bring it up, so I thank you from getting the cameras downtown and for the parks, cuz all the parks need it. So I thank you for that.
Well, just to be clear, I, I can't take credit for what's happening now with the cameras, that was not a grant project, but the twenty-three thousand, if that's successful, which we expect it will be, um that's how much will be allocated by the parish. Um that will go into cameras to, to provide security to these areas.
And just so I think we're clear, the budget, we put fifty thousand dollars in for cameras in the last budget, so these things have been in the work since we approved the budget. This was just a supplement to that.
Correct, yes, and I actually just spoke with Marcus Mabillan in our, our IT department. Um we're working on, as you know, Councilman, a, a final draft of the master plan for, for Mooney, so I wanted to make sure I had his input and also that he saw kind of where we're going, so that, you know, if that affects the placement of cameras in that park, um we know about it before we actually start doing any type of uh construction work. So my understanding is he's already working on the cameras for Mooney.
Oh yeah, yeah, they done started on that project, uh they put the wires in, they installed the wires Saturday, in the park last Saturday, but I just wanna make sure that I know what a layout for every camera in the park. Because, uh, and I always have to say this, for the record, I want every inch of the park, a camera can see anybody anywhere around the park. Because, and you know, I done stated several times, and I'm gonna continue to state it. I want the park to be safe for everybody, for the old ones that go to the park, for the new ones even coming to the park. Thank you, Charles. And I know you ain't have nothing to do with the cameras being installed in the park, I know that one.
Not, not these, but hopefully soon, yes.
Yeah.
So, do y'all have a plan for cameras at Jackson Park right now or not?
I don't, I don't know for offhand where the 50,000 that was budgeted, where, where those cameras are going. I know that some are going in Mooney. Lacy, do you know where the other cameras might be going?
It was originally budgeted for Mooney and for Clark, if I remember correctly. And then, as other parks could be added into that.
Well, I just want a game plan because we're about to, you know, spend some money in Jackson improving it with basketball covers and everything else. So, I told them to run lines underneath the slab for electrical and, and cameras. So, where if they put the parking lot in, they can get it around the covered area at night, late at night. So, I just want to make sure we kind of start preparing for that when it actually is installed. We can actually get some cameras out there since it's tucked away.
My, my goal would be that if we have funding for cameras, let's say in Mooney and Clark, that, that we focus these funds on our other parks for Jackson, Mark King. Zemurray's large, so I'm not sure if 23,000 is enough to cover that park to the extent we want. Maybe we focus on those two smaller parks and the parking malls. That would be my, my, I guess, my recommendation. I need to talk with Marcus and find out, you know, how much we're spending on the current cameras and then we can kind of figure out, okay, how many can we buy to supplement those?
Any other questions? Anyone from the public? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion approved.
Second. Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Debitario?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Charles. Okay, number seven.
A resolution authorizing the purchase of a KX-040-4R1AP excavator for $65,279.53 for the water and sewer, sewer department. State contract number 440017852. Jana Swal.
This was approved in the water and sewer budget originally for this year. It's on state contract, we'll be purchasing this from Star Equipment. Guy couldn't be here tonight because he's underneath the weather, but if you have any questions, I'll try to answer anything I can.
Is it within budget?
Yes, y'all approved it.
Y'all did meet with Guy, and Guy told me, "Don't say nothing, just, uh, let it be accepted." Told him, "That ain't me now," so you got me mixed up. But you say he under the weather, so I guess I'm gonna let it be accepted.
Anyone from the public?
So, what is the excavator used for? Can y'all help me out with that?
Cleaning ditches, possibly picking up trash.
That's what I thought. So, the, where I live, we have ditches, a lot, and they are not cleaned very often.
This is water and sewer.
Okay, so who would clean the ditches?
Robert Williams.
So, are they, do they not have the equipment to clean the ditches? Or what? Because, because we don't, we, yes. Because we are not getting the services of ditches being cleaned on a regular basis. Even when the citizens place the work orders, I'm a walker, so I walk, I walk my community. Not only do I walk my community, I walk adjoining communities, and the ditches need to be cleaned. So, as we are coming up on this budget year, we may need, I don't know if we need more equipment or more personnel, but the ditches are not being cleaned, so.
Thank you.
And just for, let them know for the record, uh, the ditches are about a month and a half behind schedule as of right now of being cleaned. He's not, once he go on the streets, start working, he doing part of it, then he jumping, I guess, to the hot spots, and he not coming back over to the cold spot. So, the cold spots still need to be done. So, about a month and a half now behind on the ditches in District Three.
There was an earlier question, there was 70,000 budgeted for this.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion approved.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Debitario?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Resolution number eight.
A resolution authorizing a purchase of a tow behind Carlton SP-7500 series, series stump cutter from Ditch Witch of Louisiana for the total of $73,750, RFP-22-21. Jana Swal.
This is another item that was approved in this year's budget, and we did do a request for proposals. And Ditch Witch was the actually, only one that actually submitted a proposal. We did have a few other companies that inquired, was trying to submit some other kind of contract pricing that wasn't state contract pricing, and when the bid closed, they actually didn't turn in a bid.
I have a question on this one here. So, how many stumps do we have that we need to, or about stump, this isn't for you, Jenna, I mean, but whoever needs this stump grinder, I want a little more information on that.
Come up to the front, please, please.
32 stumps? I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to figure out why would we want to sub this out to someone else to do? I mean, $73,000 for 32 stumps seems a bit much. Who's?
We had more than that, but since the storm, some people had theirs removed. They've been on the list for a while, and we still have about 15 trees to actually take down right about now. So, it's adding to it, so.
Yeah, but, I mean.
And we're always cutting trees.
Yeah.
Excuse me, not only that, but when you're digging ditches, sometimes your trees are right next to the ditch bank, and their roots need to be ground down instead of dug up. So, you might want to shave it down so we can get to the bottom of the ditch or the covert.
I was just, I mean, because the math's just done that up to me on, on getting a stump grind. You know, I mean, 32, even at $300 a stump, which is premium, $9,600, and we spent it 73,000 on a stump grinder. Maintenance, who's gonna run it, who's gonna train it, liability? I mean, those are some questions there on a stump grinder. I mean, it's not, you know, it's a lot of maintenance on those stump grinders. Just want to make sure that we're aware of this, when we can sub it out or lease a machine if we need it and then return it back.
I know you knew in that department, have you ever tried to reach out to somebody, uh, just pricing the stumps, getting them grinded? I'm talking about another company?
No, we have not.
Yeah. What I'm concerned about, one is safety. Two, I'm concerned about, now, when I met with you, how many men's you said you was short?
My department's supposed to have 18, and now we have.
Speaking to Mike, please, because I want everybody to hear this.
My department have 18, supposed to be on the road. I have 13 on the road, three out.
Okay, and so what I'm looking at, now you trying to inquire more equipment, and I didn't know you was here. You over the ditch crew, right, cleaning the ditches?
Correct.
Okay, so, and we done reached out, and you done received a text, I mean, the emails, uh, people done reached out to me, so you about to purchase some, you want to look at some more equipment. I know we already put this money aside for the stump grinder, but he's what, he wasn't in the department when we put the money to the side. He wasn't over the department when we put the money to the side for the stump grinder. Now, I'm concerned about, if you get a stump grinder, I want to know, is a tracking device gonna be on the stump grinder? You know, because new equipment now, you need tracking device. I don't want the stump grinder to go to nobody's house and do the work. I know you don't have nothing to do with that. That's my concern, and then I'm concerned about why we so behind on the ditches? And yet, we looking at a stump grinder, how many men's it gonna take to operate the stump grinder? So, he gonna need a truck, right? He gonna need a new truck or he can use one of the old truck?
One of the old trucks for now.
Yeah, so, that's my concern about, and if the stump grinder don't have a tracker on it, well, we can keep up with it, because I don't want the stump grinder end up in all being at by Uncle John's house getting the stumps grinded. I know ain't nobody gonna say this, that's my concern, that it belongs to the city and it need to be used by the city workers when they at work, not for their personal jobs.
That's how equipment is currently used, and that's also stated in our policies.
Yeah, but it's not used like that, so we can't say that.
If you have examples of how the equipment is not used that way, then I don't know why we're implying that employees are dishonest or using, misusing equipment. If you see that and you have an issue with that, then you need to report that according to the policy, and that employee will be dealt with.
My, my issue.
We do subcontract these stump grinders to come in when we need them. We have. The department has asked for this piece of equipment for a long time because we wait on this piece of equipment to come out and grind stumps. Something that's been asked for, something that's been budgeted, and something that's apparently needed.
Well, no, I mean, just slipped my mind, I'm just looking at it, I mean, you'd have to cut a, a lot of stumps to make up that, that money back. It just really doesn't make any financial sense on a $73,000 machine. And then, you don't have the amount of, you know, you don't have enough men to clean the ditches, do other services, because you're always short. You gonna have to worry about somebody else monitoring. We can just sub it out to a company who does that.
As he said, while he's cleaning ditches, they need to grind stumps and roots. That's part of cleaning the ditch at times, so you're gonna wait on it.
You can pull an excavator, can pull a stump out. We have them, don't we?
And to mine the whole strength of the ditch, it's easier at times to grind the stump. That's what the man said, he does it for a living.
Well, Ms. Jana, I'm gonna ask you this here, Ms. Jana. In the process of talking to the people with the stump grinder, do it have a tracking device on it?
Uh, this particularly doesn't, but it may be an option that we could add to it, I can find that out.
Yes, ma'am, for the future. Can we always look for trackers to be on the equipment from this point on for the future? Or just see how much it costs? Because that's the problem now, you know? Be exact, I, I went to Mr. Robert's office and saw a lot of equipment back there, not knowing what shape it's in. But I'm saying, we don't know, and I'm gonna say, I don't know what equipment being used, where, when. So, if we had a tracker on it, that's where it can be monitored. Because I'm talking about a stump grinder, once something break from the teeth to everything, it gonna cost money to repair. So, we can sit here and, and get the stump grinder now, but then when it come to repair, you know, do they have anybody in the shop that can repair, or it have to go back to the manufacturer?
Usually depends on the warranty. If it's under warranty, it'll go back to the manufacturer or service and authorized dealer around here. I know the shop will work on everything that they can to their best interest. If the mechanics out there can't, they will go to an authorized dealer that is around here.
So, do we know how much the teeth cost on the stump grinder?
That's generally what you're repairing, and that has Allen wrenches or something similar to that that set the teeth. So, that's generally what you're repairing.
Yeah, so, well, it's amazing, when I ask a question, I get five people on to talk to me at the same time. So, I'm glad I can see, so I know who talking. So, I'm asking you questions because I, I definitely want to know about the tracking device, because it don't make sense to get no equipment, no equipment from this day moving forward, and we don't have no device on it to see what equipment is there. Because if the taxpayers are buying the equipment, it need to be in Hammond. And it need, it don't need to break at Councilman Andrew's house, which I know he ain't gonna use it at his house. It don't need to be broke at my house, it need to be used for the taxpayers of Hammond. And that what my concern is. So, that's it on me, that's it for me, thank you.
So, Jana, if we approve this item for tonight, and you say that that's something you could check on with, since Councilman Wells bringing it up about the tracking device, do you think that that would change the pricing on it or?
I honestly don't believe you have to actually get a tracking device through this company.
Okay.
Tracking devices are available, they're all kind of options. So, I mean, that is something that we can actually inquire about and handle.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone from the public? Any more questions from anyone on the council? Pleasure of the council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Debitario?
No.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
No.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Resolution number nine.
A resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement between the Industrial Development Board of the City of Hammond, Inc., and the City of Hammond for the use of Police Training Center at 47038 Conrad Anderson Boulevard, Lacey Landrum.
This is a housekeeping item. The Police Training Center has been occupied by the Police Department for many years. It came to our understanding through the city attorney that the Industrial Development Board is still the owner of this building. They are discussing whether to transfer the entire building to the Police Department, but in this interim time, we're asking for your approval of a cooperative endeavor agreement to formalize that arrangement and to make sure that we have dotted all the i's and crossed all the t's. The other benefit of this, and this will come into play in the next item, is that the Sheriff's Office also uses that building for their training purposes as well. The Hammond Police Department has primary use, the Sheriff's Office has secondary use, and they are agreeing to split the cost of replacing the roof with the City of Hammond 50-50.
That one that's on the next item is the full price?
That's correct.
Okay, so they would be covering half of that?
That's correct.
Gotcha.
So, who all is on this board?
Currently on this board is Perry Catchings, I'm gonna have to go off of memory here. Hart Bordelon, I think Janet Davis is on this one. The Hammond Area Economic Development Board and the Hammond Industrial Development District are two separate boards, but they meet concurrently. The mayor and myself serve, but as, according to the bylaws, whoever is the mayor and whoever is the Director of Administration serve. Randy Vicner, and that, I don't know if I named all the names or not. I know Dr. Baraya is on the economic development. I think Janet serves on both, I think Randy serves on both, Hart serves on both. Perry serves only on this one because you have to be a resident of Hammond, you have to be a resident of Hammond in order to serve on the Hammond Economic Development Board.
Okay, uh, when the last time they had a meeting, the board?
About a month ago.
Okay, because what I'm, is this a nonprofit group or what?
The Industrial Development Board is a nonprofit.
How much y'all have in y'all account?
I don't know offhand how much the industrial board has, maybe 10, 15 grand.
Yeah, and the reason I'm asking this here, because I'm completely confused. And what I'm confused about, Andre, it won't be a problem, and I'm just using this as an example. If I'm on the board for the children museum, and they standing before us asking for money, am I allowed to vote on it or cannot vote on it or what?
Yeah, as long as you have no personal interest, or any member of your immediate family doesn't have any personal interest in what's going on, then just because you're on the member of a nonprofit board, that doesn't automatically disqualify you.
Okay.
To be clear, too, the Industrial Development Board is not receiving any money in this arrangement. There's no, they don't charge the City of Hammond or the Hammond Police Department any rent.
Yeah, I read that part. And I read the part about the utilities. Some of it's in here, but some of the questions I had, you didn't have it. I even read about, no, I just read this about the party, about the Sheriff Department. Gonna go in half on paying for the roof. So I'm still, I'm confused on, I guess this for the next one. I'm still confused on why that we have buildings, and we got to pay for the maintenance. This, and I'm gonna tell you, this was going on. This remind me so much of that Department of Motor Vehicle stuff. You know, we was dealing with that, you know, the city had agreed to, and to pay for that, and yet the taxpayers was going over there using the service, but still wasn't getting the break. Because this taxpayer's money we using to, uh, to do the roof on the building. And I think if the roof wouldn't have never came up, we as, me, I'm gonna say me, as a councilman, we wouldn't have never known nothing about this building if it wouldn't have been for the price of the roof. And I think that's the only reason it came up, that we knew about it. Yeah, you can talk now.
I would just say that this goes to benefit the Police Department. The Police Department has been over there for many, many years, using the building rent-free. So I don't, I'm not quite sure that this is the same arrangement that you're alluding to with the Department of Motor Vehicles.
Yeah, well, it's pretty much the same. Okay, the utilities, okay, let's go with that. Utilities, all of it. You know, they paying for that, right? The utilities on the building. The internet, the telephone, some of the things that I read, the light bill.
The Police Department pays for some, and the Sheriff's Office pays for some.
Yeah. So then, one of the biggest questions I have, and this one thing, uh, we definitely need to think about, why five years?
Why five years for the arrangement?
Yes.
Andre, did you, I mean, he kind of, that's pretty standard, I guess, but-
Yeah, you wouldn't go too far out. I mean, the thinking is, the city's had free use of this for a long time. And now you putting money into the building, so you want to be sure you've at least capitalized what the expense is for the roof. Five years, it's not automatic. It could be, it could be a different number.
Yeah, well, and this what I'm scared of, Andre. I'm scared so much gonna be thrown at the next city councilman sitting up here. So we sit here and give it five years, the next city, the next city councilmen that's sitting up here, they not gonna be aware of this. And that's what I'm afraid of, just like with the department, and I keep saying this here, because I want everybody, you know, for the sinking everybody here, just like Department of Motor Vehicle. You know, we dealt with that a long time, and me personally, I don't see what benefit the city at all. You know, we made it about IDs, federal IDs, all of that I know about. But I don't, it still costs the taxpayers money, and so I'm concerned about this here. The Sheriff Department can pay for it. But the taxpayer, the money come out the Police Department is still taxpayer money. We sit here and vote on it, it's still taxpayer money. So that's what I'm looking at. So I'm saying, five years, I don't think it's fair for the next city councilman sitting up here, not knowing, because here we going into our last year, and we just found out about it. So, and now you want to say the roof, yeah, the roof sound good, but still in all, what about when it need air conditioning? So the air conditioning gonna cost about the same amount as the roof. And we know that things are started going up. Then what about when the wall fall down? Then I'm looking at the roof, uh, the insurance company, they done already knocked our head off. How the, how the insurance company couldn't get involved in this here? So it's, I mean, I got a thousand questions just on this here one project.
We use this building to train.
Yeah, I don't need everybody to talk. I need Andre. I think you're the one that was talking, so let us finish.
Yeah, so under the agreement, the city can terminate this on ninety days' notice. So the five years was to protect the city, to recapture the investment of the roof. But if you change your mind, you just cancel this in ninety days, ninety days' notice.
And if, to your, to your point, how about we appropriate new funding to build a brand-new training facility for the Police Department?
Not the one we got in place now? To my point, not the one we got in place now.
That's, I guess that's my question.
Yeah, no, that's my question. Not the ones that we got in place now.
Are you gonna put the police training facility in another location? Because this is rent-free. It's a building that we've used for many, many years that has worked really well for both the Police Department and the Sheriff's Office to offer a lot of training.
The chief could put some input on this. He used to train out there on how much we use this building and have used it.
And I do know this here, too. Yeah, you could come. Yeah, I know this here, too. They done had other folks use that building, and they done made money off that building, too, that trained in that building. I know that, too. How you doing, sir?
Doing good. How about you?
I'm fine.
Yeah, the Training Center is used pretty much every day anymore. It's, uh, we have some classes that come in, uh, that we put on strictly for the Hammond Police Department, other agencies that are close by. We just sponsor it. We also have our yearly and semi SWAT training, dailies, K-9 trainings. Uh, that usually is the weekly event, and, or at least a monthly event for the SWAT team, weekly event for the K-9. Yearly event for the retrainers. So the building is used just about every day anymore. We got several classrooms in the building. We have four, I think it's three or four classrooms that we use all the time, and then we have a shoot house right on the side of it, so. Other agencies come in, we let them use the building. Also do some training with other agencies, so it's, it's an older building. The roof has been needing repairs for quite some time. It's, uh, I was out there in nineteen ninety-eight, and I don't think the roof's been repaired or even anything happened into the building since I was out there, other than a little paint.
Yeah. I tell you what, and I'm gonna be honest with you, you know, I'm really against this. And I think the best thing in their favor by letting, by letting you come up here talking about it. And I'm against it for the simple fact else. I don't want to do no five years, because I feel like we're cheating the next city councilman that's coming before us. And then the police have a budget. I'm trying to see why the Police Department didn't use their budget on this here. And I don't know if you can answer that, or go back to Ms. Lacey or not.
They are using their budget. So the Police Department is paying for ha, that's really the next item. But the Police Department is using ha, is paying for half of it from their budget. The Sheriff's Department is gonna pay for the other half of the roof from their funds.
So it's, so it's a, it's a split. All the years that I was out there, and I'm sure it's continued, I really haven't paid much attention to it, but I'm sure it's still working this way. We always tried to get the Sheriff's Office to pay as much as we could. And when it comes to anything that affects both agencies, they've always been willing to contribute. Like when we added classrooms, if we needed additional money from the Sheriff's Office, if they didn't necessarily give us any funds, I had a room put back there that they actually provided all the labor for. So it didn't cost the city anything at that time. So because we work together, we always try to get them to contribute if it's something that both agencies should be contributing to.
And I know that the Sheriff Department used that building a lot, because I trained in that building.
You know, we are bound now to have forty hours of retraining every year, all post-certified officers. So we have over a hundred and some more people when we had full staff. The Sheriff's Office probably got three times that amount. Sheriff's Office uses it every year for their retrainers. They also use it for recertifications if they have the instructors to do that. And we do the same thing, so this building is used very much every, just about every day.
So the outside offices, not in Tansville Parish, they use the building also, right?
Only if we put on classes, they'll come in and use our shot, our shoot house outside. They may not necessarily have one of those with their agency, so they'll come in, they'll use ours. Anytime we sponsor outside agency classes, we, the Hammond Police Department, get free spots. So if that, if that class is a five-hundred-dollar class for a student, and we get two spots, we saved a thousand bucks. And we got our officers that training. So we just don't let them come in, use the building at zero cost. We're gonna get something out of it. We gonna, and it's always usually just training for our agency.
Couple of questions. First of all, I'm glad to see the split for the next item with the roof, because I was calculating it, if they split the roof, and say we do five years, that breaks down to about a thousand forty-nine dollars a month in rent if we were to replace the roof and do it for five years. So I think that's obviously a good deal for rent. However, I'd hate to see us continue to quote-unquote rent this property and have, I would rather it obviously come to the City of Hammond. So I think that if you guys could work towards that, that would certainly be to everyone's benefit. It sounds like we've made money off of this facility, we've maintained it, we've done a lot to it, which is like ownership. We should probably get ownership. I'm curious about insurance and whether we've paid insurance on this building. If there was insurance on this building, why didn't it cover the roof? Also, who's paying the property taxes? I mean, all of these things, it sounds like we're doing a little bit of a cleanup job, so I just want to make sure we're doing the cleanup job correctly.
Well, I'm, I'm not really sure of any of those answers, simply because, to be honest with you, when I was a trainee officer, I didn't pay any attention to any of that.
Right.
I wasn't concerned about that.
You're not supposed to know that, sure.
It was just my understanding, without checking everything out, to be completely honest with you, that that building was there, it was there before me. We didn't do a whole lot to it while I was out there, other than some minor repairs and a little paint that we put on the building. As far as the ownership, I always was under the understanding the City of Hammond did not own the building. I don't know if we do, if we don't. Maybe y'all can tell me. And so, but again, I wasn't really interested in that. I was concerned with the, with training.
Do you know, Andre, do we have insurance on this building, and will we get insurance on this building? We've had insurance. Why didn't it cover the roof?
The roof is dated and rusted.
So it wasn't from the storm? Okay.
No, this is, this is over many years. I had the building painted probably somewhere around two thousand, two thousand and two. I'm not really certain, I don't remember if we did anything to the roof, but if we did anything at all, we put some kind of coating on the aluminum roof. We didn't, we didn't do any new roof repair or nothing like that.
The Google view looked like it was rusted out completely.
Well, it is.
Yeah.
And some of the building's getting that way, to be honest.
So this nonprofit, is it active with the state of Louisiana right now?
I, I don't know offhand. I'm sure we can check into the reports and make sure that it is. I know that they filed their financials. I'm not in charge of this nonprofit, to be clear.
Okay, and the reason I'm asking, because I think we trying to set up a nonprofit meeting right now. And Steve Leon, if I'm not mistaken, he wanted to know the finance for every nonprofit stand before. And, and I'm trying to see why everybody is so quiet now, why ain't nobody asking any questions? Bank statements, uh, financial statements, uh, active with the state, not active with the state, so.
If we had had any of these questions prior to the meeting, I could have brought an entire portfolio or had that board president or the treasurer here to present that information.
Well, I think now, see, and I'm glad you said it, I think what the problem is, that we assume, just because you bring something before us, and I know it's like, you know, everybody tired of me talk, just because you bring it before us, that don't mean it gonna get passed. So for the future, that's why we need to have everything in place. If you ask me about a street light on Moon Avenue, I can tell you, two oh six the light out there. Eight oh seven the light out there. Sixteen hundred block, they got three lights out there. So, because I be in the area. And so I'm asking these here questions, because these some of the questions, I keep saying, these, these the things that the community asks me. Well, Devon, how you sit there and get him a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars? We ain't got no light. See, these are questions I got to deal with when I leave from up here.
To be clear again, this CEA, this contract that you are hopefully going to approve, doesn't give any money to the Industrial Development Board for the City of Hammond. There's no rent being paid on this building. There's no money going to that development board. They're not lined up as a partner in the nonprofit sharing of funds. This, they're not going to ask you for any funds. Again, you've had this contract for several weeks now, because this was set for the last agenda. If you have questions, I'll be more than happy to research those and more than happy to bring information. But I am not a mind reader, and I don't know the financials of an organization that I am neither the president nor the treasurer of, and that's not even like part of what we're talking about tonight.
Well, seem like since you don't have everything, look like we need to put this on hold till you get everything in order. That's my opinion. I'm only one vote now.
I don't know, I don't know why you would do that when that has nothing to do with this contract. This contract is to the benefit of the Hammond Police Department and to the Sheriff's Office, who have been using this building for many years. There's nothing binding the City of Hammond financially in this contract. This is just to benefit for police training, which I think everyone in this room agrees, we want police training.
As I stated, I know about the building. I've trained in the building when I was with the Sheriff Department. I've been in many different trainings out there. Like Assistant Chief was saying about the different rooms and things that are in there. And the building is an older building, so.
I would say my department do training in that building also. We just had two trainings last month. One was on heavy equipment, and the other one was on tree cutting.
Thank you.
With other organizations, too.
Councilwoman Gonzalez asked a very good question. Was the insurance being paid on the building? And I just want to know, how can you pay insurance on a building that the city does not own and not come before the council? I'm just trying to understand the dynamics of that. So you're paying insurance on a building that the city does not own, or you're paying utilities in a building that the city does not own? How does that take place?
Takes place because we use it.
Right, but is there a contract in place? I mean, you can't, if you came and used the entity somewhere else.
Basically been given to us to use since, must be, how many years? Thirty?
The question is, how can you use taxpayer money?
Please let me talk, better talk.
Mayor. The question is, how can you use taxpayer money to pay insurance on a building that the city does not own, even if it's being used?
Because the taxpayers are getting training out of this building for their police officers, firemen, and also TPSO as well.
So, Mr. Kudran, legally, can money be used to pay an entity that has no contract in place with the city? Can money from the citizens be used to pay those bills?
Yes, because you have an insurable interest in the building.
With nothing in writing.
Correct. Now, look, you ought to have something in writing. That's why we're proposing this.
Right.
Memorialize it in writing. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, and then to answer a question that was asked, if this is the Industrial Development Board of the City of Hammond at fifteen fourteen Martin Drives, number two, suite one thirty-six, this nonprofit has not been active with the city, with the state of Louisiana since May seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, it was revoked. The last report filed for this entity was April tenth, two thousand and eighteen. So that answers the question about the nonprofit status of the Industrial Development Board of Hammond.
Somebody asked you, when was it, when was it active?
And I'm on the Louisiana Secretary of State website. It was filed originally January thirty-first, nineteen sixty-six. The last report filed- The last report filed was April 10, 2018. It was revoked by the state, May 17, 2021.
And how long did it take to find that?
I just pulled it up while we were sitting there.
All right, thank you.
But they they do have record title to the property. They've got to, they've got to submit their paperwork, but they have title to that property.
Anyone else from the public? Pleasure to counsel.
I'm going to make a motion to approve pending the economic board getting their status in good standing with the Secretary of State, so that someone has the ability to to sign this contract.
I'll second that.
That's usually just a $35 fee, so it's not usually a big deal.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
What I'm voting on, what Ms. Gonzalez just stated, what I'm voting on first?
To approve the the contract pending the nonprofit getting up to date with the Secretary of State, getting their charter reestablished.
The not in good standings that Tracy read with the Secretary of State, they just need to file their annual report with them.
If you come to the mic.
I come to the front.
Denise Palmer, 43502 Robinson Road. Why would you vote on it if it's pending? Why don't you table it until it's completed?
Well, the reason I made the motion that way is I do understand that we have a bid and probably as time is of the essence. And I do this in my law practice, I could get this back in place tomorrow. So it's something that could be done very quickly instead of waiting two more weeks when we have a meeting.
But you are a lawyer, so why would you even put yourself in that position?
Because they can't, they can't do the contract unless they get it done.
Right, I understand the contract, but also, why would you vote on it?
Because it makes them get it done. It makes them get it done.
That's just my question.
I understand.
I abstain.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye. Wait, didn't we vote this already? Yeah.
They already voted, yeah.
He was the last one?
Yeah.
Resolution number 10.
A resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with Parton Roofing LLC for $125,900 to remove and replace the existing roof at the police training center, RFP 22-17, Jana Swallow.
We did put the RFE out, Parton Roofing was the lowest proposal that come in. I do want to point out, I closed this bid on January 31st. We have already asked for one extension on this roof. They was graciously enough to grant us that extension. We all know inflation and prices are increasing. I just fear they gave us to the 13th, which is tomorrow, to give them an answer of approval or not, that this may actually cost us more money in the long run. So I'm asking for approval to move forward.
And the sheriff department is splitting half of this bill.
Yes, sir.
So Ms. Jana?
Yes.
Ask you a question. So if the sheriff department is splitting the bill, why we still have $125,000 on there?
We are going to pay that and they're going to refund the city if I'm correct.
So this is like a little loan, huh? I I'm asking, I don't know.
We do this many times. The contract controls it. So the contract that you just approved, the city will front the funds or we could go ahead and invoice them now and say, go ahead and give us the funds. We'll put them in the project account, wait for the final invoice to come in and get paid.
Anyone from the public? Anyone else from the council? Pleasure to counsel.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Abstain.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Resolution number 11.
A resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract on behalf of the city of Hammond with DPC Enterprises in the estimated amount of $59,472. Jana Swallow.
This is just a rebid of our past contracts that have come to an end. This is the coordination for our water wells. DPC is actually the only one that is pretty much in a state that services all of the parishes and cities. We have a company that always sends in a no bid Univar just to stay on our bid list for current or future proposals that they may be able to bid on. So we're asking for approval to move forward with a contract with DPC Enterprises.
Any question from anyone on the council? Anyone from the public? Pleasure to counsel.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Resolution number 12.
A resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into contract on behalf of the city of Hammond with rail technical services in the estimated amount of $28,170. Jana Swallow.
This is another contract that came to end that we had to rebid out. This is for our monthly and annual inspections of our track, signal, and grid inspection for the railroad.
Any question from anyone on the council? Anyone from the public?
Yeah, I got a question. Ms. Jana, for the railroad, where is where is money coming from?
I know it's budgeted in the street department's account. I don't know where the actual funds arrived from.
I don't remember if it's budgeted under consultant or under rail fees. We can try to look in the budget and give you an answer.
This one actually comes out of consulting fees. I didn't know that's what you was inquiring about.
And since you're looking to, this the railroad spur, right?
No.
Yes, yes, this part is, yes.
Okay. And while you're looking, how much money have we received since we started collecting money from the from the railroad spur?
I am not able to look up Munis to give you that number, to tell you an up to date number. Again, we can, if we have advanced questions, we're more than happy to bring information to the meeting to help you make better decisions. I can, I can try to look it up in terms of what was budgeted, but I don't, I can't give you an actual number because I can't log into Munis from here.
Well, how much have we received so far?
I don't know, I can't tell you exactly what we receive every month from brand packaging and from Home Depot. I don't remember those numbers off the top of my head with regards to our 40-plus million dollar budget.
Okay, well, for the record, and which I had asked you this before, for the record, we received 200, 200-some thousand dollars from the last time I requested this. And this is something that the city council, we had to fight back and forth on this and we even had some fighting a whole lot against it. But since we brought it up, look how much money we done received on this versus the taxpayers been paying this all the while. And since we brought it up, and look at the money that you receiving on it now, that it's not even coming from the taxpayers. I just want to put that on the record saying, I think that was a good thing that I voted for when I did it and I caught a lot of hell behind it, but look at the benefits from it now. And so that's all I wanted to say. It's a good thing that we brought it up and it's a good thing that it was passed, that now it ain't costing the taxpayer money, it actually paying for itself now.
Anyone from the public? Pleasure to counsel.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Introduction number three. I'm sorry, 13.
It's like, don't start it.
A resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into contract with Pointer Smith Contracting for railroad track repairs in the amount of $29,452. Jana Swallow.
Pointer Smith was the lowest proposal that we just received. The inspection report had revealed that we have 25 cross ties, 10 switches at eight different locations that are in need of repair as soon as possible. So we're asking for council's approval to proceed with the contract for repairs.
Anyone from the public on this matter? Anyone from the council?
Yeah, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Hi.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Introduction of ordinance set for public hearing, number one.
Ms. Lisa, you don't have to name all these things.
Thank you.
Okay.
Introduction of an ordinance to declare as surplus and authorize the sale of the items listed below to sell on govdeal.com. Jana Swallow.
I do want to see if we can amend this ordinance to remove item number 15. Reads that three bottles of Jack Daniels and a bottle of Gatorade was submitted in surplus. It was actually evidence, but it was removed and discarded through the actual officers over there.
What about the six containers of gang detergent, that staying?
Yes, yes, ma'am. And also, a minute from the list, I want to add, they got a Vizio TV, Hysense TV, and just a TV that didn't have a name brand on it. Pair of bolt cutters, a gold wedding ring, and a clash ring that I need to add to that list.
All right, so I make a motion to amend this ordinance with number 15, removing the and three bottles of Jack Daniels and one bottle of Gatorade and adding the televisions and other items that Jana just set out.
Second in motion.
All right. Jack Daniels. Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Public hearing will be scheduled for April 26, 2022 at 5:30.
Now make a motion to introduce as amended.
Second in motion.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
What I'm voting on?
The the ordinance after we removed those things and added those things. The first one just amended the list.
Oh, from Jana, right?
Now we'd be introducing it, yes, for number one.
Okay.
Yeah, it's still the same list.
I just want to make sure, okay, aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Public hearing will be scheduled for April 26, 2022 at 5:30.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jana.
Yeah.
Introduction number two.
An introduction of an ordinance to authorize the mayor to enter into a 30-degree right-of-way agreement with Entergy for electrical service to the treatment plant expansion on Fagan Drive, Webb Anderson.
30 foot, right?
30.
30 foot, right, right.
Right. This is something we've been working for a long time with Entergy on and we finally got their agreement sent back to us and this would authorize us, the city, the mayor to sign it. This is the existing project we've had going on and is to get the service from Fagan Drive to the plant. We've been waiting and actually the contractor's probably about to be waiting on the same thing. Gets the process finished.
Anyone from the public on this matter? Anyone from the council?
So where you getting the service at right now? Where you getting the service from?
They have an existing service to the plant by the headworks and they also have one by their offices. But this is to service the new blowers we put in for the new aerators. They're coming from Fagan Drive across the existing city property to where we put that new fence, the new cell. We've got three blowers going right there and they're servicing from there.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Motion to introduce.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Public hearing will be scheduled for April 26, 2022 at 5:30.
Thank you, Will.
Thank y'all.
Now, I'm going to make an amendment, a motion to amend the agenda to add a budget change. How do I, what do you change order for the canal improvements? Yeah, so the the language is the introduction of an ordinance to amend the agenda so that you can add the introduction of an ordinance to amend the budget to transfer $315,000 from the sales tax fund balance to the fiscal year 2022 canal improvements, which is project number 12206. Yeah, that's the motion to amend.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
And Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Now a motion to introduce as amended.
Second.
Councilman Andrew?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman, Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Thank you, Will. All right. Now, council report, I mean to report, mayor?
In lieu of time, no reports.
Council reports. First, I'd like to have the housing committee come up and get their report and after the housing committee, the charter review committee can come up and give their report.
Hello, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Karen Walston at 404 South Cherry Street and I am a member of the housing committee and I'm going to give you a very brief report on what we've been doing. As previously reported to you all, the housing committee has selected a consultant named Civics to conduct our housing study. We worked with Civics and we were able to get them to reduce their price to do this study from 88,478, around 500. So after, after we got that taken care of, this was a budget, within the budget that y'all approved on February 22nd. And so with this happening and getting some other info that we wanted from them, we have executed, Jana's executed the, we've gotten the contract signed with them just recently and now we are working on a kickoff day for the study. And that has been already set up by Jeffrey for February 20, February 22nd, right? Please excuse me, April 22nd. And we already have kind of an overall layout of the day. In the morning, we will be working on the details, work plan, the schedule of deliver- In the morning, we will be working on the details, work plan, the schedule of deliverables, and also Jeffrey is working to schedule some interviews with city staff and council members. Now, in the afternoon, we plan to have a tour, a driving tour of the city, specifically the areas of the city where there are opportunities and needs. These are residential areas. So I'd like to invite city council, if they'd like to attend that, or go on the tour, because we'll be probably covering all of your districts. Maybe not yours, sir, but some of the other districts. He's still, yeah. Anyway, so we'll be working on a detailed schedule with Jeffrey on that day, so we'll keep you abreast of that, and we'll, we look forward to getting this study underway. Okay, thank you. Lamar, who is co-chair, oh, here he is, co-chair of the committee.
Good afternoon, or good evening, Mr. Mayor. So, you know, I know it's been a long meeting, but I didn't want to leave without thanking you, thanking the council for giving this responsibility to our, this committee, and we really appreciate the commitment, financial commitment that you guys made. Specifically, I want to thank you, Councilman Divatario, for leading the project, and I really do appreciate that, and the committee does. Joe Mears is out of the, out of town, I think he's at an appraisers meeting, but our subcommittee is made up of Ron Matthews, C. Karen, and then Tony Jackson and myself, and we've been really working with this Civics to really kind of create this, this image of how we really want them to approach the project. So this meeting that we're going to do on the twenty-second is going to be critical, because the whole goal is for them to kind of capture how we feel about the project and what they really want, what we really want them to do. So we're not wasting time or wasting money. We're really trying to create a blueprint of how we move forward and how we do a housing renaissance in our communities, specifically focusing on areas that typically are deprived of any housing revalidization projects. So I think it's going to be really important that the council attends, and even if y'all would want to sit down and have a reimagine, is a new term a lot of people use, a reimagine meeting prior to us having the meeting with Civics, it could be beneficial, and that way, we will all be on the same page, so we're, if we are having a vision that might be different from what you, that you guys think y'all want to do, we won't mis, you know, misrepresent the council or the administration. But it's really going to be big, because, you know, they're visionaries, they're planners, they're thinkers, but then we want them to think what we want them to think, not what they want to think. So we want them to visualize, you know what I mean? We want them to kind of see, we want them to prepare a plan from our perspective, factoring in all the things that we typically may leave out, because, you know, not everyone's represented in the conversation, okay? Does that make sense? Anybody have any questions about that?
I'm not going to be able to be there, because we're going out of town, but I will reach out to my committee appointees and make sure they, they get input for me for District Two, and I'm sure they will delay it.
District Two is a big part of the whole vision, because District Two butts up to three.
Oh, yeah.
And that represents a Murray Park, which, you know, my personal, my personal feeling is that, you know, we have such a, we have a thirty-three acre park in the city of Hammond that can anchor, you know, any kind of residential renaissance that we can have, and for us not to really zoom in and focus on that would be a misstep on our part. We've already spent money building a pool in the park, which I think the previous council and you guys have had a major role in making happen, and that park is such a huge part of the city, and I think that there's lots of residential opportunities that surround that park that we can maybe, you know, in my personal opinion, I think when they come in and they see that, they're going to agree with us a lot of ways that that's going to have to be a part of our, of how we move forward with our housing initiatives. Anyway, we'd love for you guys to be there and participate with us and help us, you know, make this, this eighty-thousand-dollar investment, you know, a good return on our investment, okay?
Appreciate it, thank you.
No, no, she said seventy-eight, you can't say eighty-eight.
Well.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, you're right, Councilman Wells, but you guys, but you guys approved eighty, so we're going to try to find a way to spend that now. But we kind of, we kind of negotiated them down, but you know, you guys put the money in there, and then we, we kind of asked them, I think Ron was huge, and asked them to sharpen their pencils, and they came back and did that, and we knew that we can, we can, we had the funds available, but we also, well, I'll take that back, Jeffrey, if he's still here, Jeffrey's department committed to doing some of the work that they had planned to do on their own, but with Jeffrey being a part of the city now, he took on some of the, am I saying that right, Jeffrey?
Yes.
I'm trying to brag, yeah, so Jeffrey took on some of the responsibilities on the GIS stuff that allows that to be done by the city, so there, we're not having to pay for that, and we already have those services available in the city. So that's a, that had a lot to do with the reduction in the cost, too.
Good deal.
All right, Mr. Lamar, I definitely want to say to everybody on their committee, you know, I want to thank y'all for everything y'all doing, and I don't think people know that a lot of these committees, they actually don't get paid, and they, it's their time that they taking away from their family and friends and, I'm going to say church, because I know you don't drink from church, you know? So I just want to say personally.
I don't drink at church, but I do drink.
Okay, all right, well, I definitely want to, you know, personally say thank you for the whole committee and everything y'all are doing, and a lot of people might not know Lamar is one of the guys that really pushed the issue on Z. Mary Pool, and I want to thank you for everything that you're trying to do for that area, and at the time, you really don't see what nobody else is looking at, but I appreciate everything that you've been trying to do over there, and hopefully, we can continue in District Three to make that dream come true.
I think that'd be a good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lamar. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Charter review.
Guess y'all were saving the best for last.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Why y'all wait till last to do this?
I believe the council reports got moved to the end, I'm guessing because of Councilman Wells.
Oh, this is what I wanted to hear first, before we start spending a lot of money.
Frank Divatario, One Norbrook Circle, Hammond, Louisiana, I'm chair of the charter review committee, I believe the whole committee is here, except for Doug Johnson, the mayor's appointee, but Mr. Nick Gagliano, Leslie Bolner, Tracy Wells, Arlene Ninety. Anyway, so you have a report, what I handed you is a report I'd emailed to y'all, I guess it's been about a week ago or so. Just to kind of recap what we did, we held many, many meetings, did you have that final number, twenty-three, twenty-three meetings? We over, we held meetings at various locations, various times, took input from the public. At the end of the day, we ended up making nine proposed recommendations, they were unanimous by all six committee members, including the mayor's appointee. There were some things that, we came to a conclusion to recommend, or that didn't necessarily require an amendment to the charter, or just some issues that we identified. Everything in here was ultimately adopted by everybody on the committee. I won't, unless y'all have questions, I don't, or do y'all, I mean, I don't know what y'all want, do you want me to go through any of this, or do you just want it all?
Since you up here, and we're going to make it short, but I would like for you to, like the proposed amendment for the Hammond Charter, just kind of sit there and say, I'm looking at newly elected mayor, you know, just say the salary.
Sure.
And, you know.
So there were nine proposals that we recommended, several of these, some action could either all or partially be taken probably by the council through ordinance or otherwise, meaning not necessarily requiring an amendment to the charter. For instance, proposals one and two have to do with compensation of the council and mayor, that is originally in the charter, it set forth that amounts, and then gave power to the council and the administration to amend that without having to come back to the charter. However, it was there, and as we were going through it, it's been at least over a decade since we could determine that raises were given. We were able to commission a salary study to study this, and based on these recommendations, the council would still be, we did recommend some raises, the council would still be essentially forty percent under the highest councilman in the study, and the mayor's pay would still be thirty, I think, percent under, under the highest mayor in the study. That was determined to be a comparable city mayor and council to this by the consultant. Proposal two had to do with clarifying the council clerk position, I believe there's been some question as to.
That's proposal three.
Yes, I'm sorry, proposal three, had to do with clarifying the council clerk position authority. Proposal four, proposal four is actually, there's, there's an ethic, there's a provision in the charter for an ethics committee, the city has actually apparently never ceded that committee, this was more of a clarification or clarity. The state has its own ethics committee, so the proposal and working with the city attorney and council was just that, to basically defer to the, to the state body that does that. All department head, okay, proposal five had to do with all department heads living within the city limit, or two miles of the city limits. There's currently a provision that it's five miles, there was debate and input on this, you know, on both sides of this, some proposed increase in it, some proposed decrease in it, there was, you know, a lot of input that came in on points as to why it should be expanded, why it should be narrowed, and I think my, you know, if you notice, I tried to give some basis or background on how we came and landed where we did, and this one actually has the shortest, most concise explanation for that, because it was one of those things that, that there was a lot of disagreement on in terms of just, there's a lot of factors to balance here on this issue, and it was just that, I think ultimately, from the public input, the committee input was that there, there's an importance in that these department heads having some immersion in the city, that as, even though as things have changed going, you know, we've gotten more remote and the world's gotten smaller, that ultimately, there's some benefit to that just geographical connection. Let's see, this again, proposal six has to do with the procedure for confirmations and things, this is something y'all could actually do probably by ordinance or maybe even resolution, but it was, again, it was, it's something that seems to have been an issue that's come up, there's, there's been multiple ways it's come up, so we, and there are, there are some provisions regarding this process in the charter, so that's how that got there. The amendment, let's see, the planning and zoning commission. There was, I would say substantial input from the public and just about everybody, lots of, I would say dissatisfaction with how the whole process works. There are several problems that handicap y'all or handcuff y'all, in that there's actually three kind of distinct boards that have some creation by state statute that don't give y'all the free, freedom to completely do this how you want, so to speak. Andre may be able to elaborate a little more if y'all want him to, but essentially, some of it can be adapted by charter, by charter only, there were some limits to have, like one of the provisions, like maybe the planning or zoning, could be adjusted to nine, some said five, some said this, and there was not a way that we could really get all three of these entities to operate together in total unison. Right now, the same five members technically serve as the planning commission, the zoning commission, and the board of adjustments, correct? Yeah, and they hold their meetings together, they're, I think they actually have three separate agendas, and I guess they kind of go, we're here for this meeting, we're here for that meeting, we're here for this meeting, and it's kind of efficient and everything. There's not a, there were, there was a lot of input in terms of bringing in, I guess, a representation for the entire city into this committee. And, and so some of that was hard to do, if not impossible, given the state statute implications. This is kind of where we all, again, this is, there were some balancing that went on here, like any kind of legislative process, I guess, and this is where we ended up. So I don't, I don't think anybody necessarily feels, on the committee feels that this is perfect, but there's a lot of factors that handcuff y'all that this is where we ended. Proposal eight, this is again, this is an advisory committee, y'all can do this without an amendment to the charter, the, one of the main arguments in favor of it was just that the, that it was felt that this was a significant priority that might warrant inclusion in the charter. It also, it also, putting it in charter, for better or worse, means it, it's harder to get rid of, it's not something that can just change at the, I guess whim, for lack of a better word, of a changing council. Proposal nine is an amendment to include annual evaluations of department heads in the charter. Again, it's probably something that could be done other ways, but it also, it was accountability and responsiveness was something that kept coming up, and this is, this is where we ended up on that. There are some items, it's Roman numeral two, a list of recommendations, these would not require charter amendment, these were unanimously identified as recommendations by the committee. The first one is considering retain, I'm sorry, is that the council consider retaining a consultant to review the budget contents for compliance with the existing charter. This, some of these topics I've seen come up at various meetings over the years, I guess. One of the, one of the provisions in the charter is that there's, that the proposed budget y'all receive includes some cost estimate of operation, like for instance, if you buy a thing, or even whether you have a grant to buy it, or it's free, or whatever it costs, your cost of ownership isn't just acquisition, you got insurance y'all were talking about tonight on something, you know, it might need whatever maintenance, you know, the stump grinder, for instance, y'all talking about, it's got, there's a cost of maintaining of owning a stump grinder. The charter has some provisions that more than just the total amount, I believe it's in the capital outlay project particularly, what these other things cost are, it, it does not appear that what is being submitted is exactly in compliance with the requirements set forth in the existing charter. Number two is the organizational structure, if you go to the website, there are department heads that are listed, if you, if you look at an organizational chart of the city, which we did, the charter sets forth, I believe it's three or four department heads, and provides for a method of amending that, so you don't have to go back to the charter to, if you want to add a department head for whatever, some new thing. But it does have a procedure that's kind of lengthy, so to speak, that involves a review process, it's not just a, let's create it, it requires extra meetings and extra notice and extra public input. As, as it turns out, apparently, there are, the process has never been implemented, there are department heads that do exist that do not appear to have been created under that structure. Yes. Some other concerns that just, again, we took a lot of public input in, and we tried to relay a lot of what we agreed, at least as a, as a committee, was important, I guess. A master plan, there was a lot of input about, about the city updating its existing master plan, I think this has actually come up maybe with the Medline thing also, but, but their community did seem to have a lot, did seem to prioritize updating the master did seem to have a lot, did seem to prioritize updating the master plan. Availability of public records was another priority there, particularly without having to submit public record requests. There were, you know, everything that's a public record is available through a public record request, which requires, you know, submitting a form, your name, usually a cost, whereas, you know, some of the stuff could just be put on the website. Department heads, this was, number five is regarding department heads. Currently, the process seems to be that once someone is appointed as a department head, they have to be confirmed and they serve in perpetuity essentially until they, until they're either fired or resigned. We did agree, all six of us, that there should be some re, you know, it should be for a term, it should be some reevaluation or reconfirmation essentially by the council when the terms change. We could not agree on, you know, whether it's a super majority, a majority, or were they being reconfirmed or removed essentially, some of which was linguistics, but, you know, it does make a difference. Public records again, that the independent audit, I guess that was what we were, y'all happened to be presenting tonight, be available on the website. Term limits and investigations came up. We both, we all actually unanimously were of the opinion that those shouldn't be changed, but they're included because it was unanimous, our opinion about it was unanimous, but they also had significant topics on both sides. Pretty much everything in here had some argument, pro or con on everything. The list of three issues that may warrant further discussion, I don't believe we made any recommendations that removed the ability of voters or the public to have a say in anything. This debt issue is something that has come up. So apparently, under the charter now, the way it's being interpreted, the city basically requires an election to be held for any effort to incur debt. Which, you know, again, the argument in favor of that is, is that it gives the, you know, voters some ultimate say on that. The other side of that is that if you're trying to build a hundred thousand dollar building and want to finance it, it costs money to have an election. It's got to go, you know, there's a process to it, a time, a burden, and that maybe you're losing out on some small projects that could be done if you didn't have to do that. You know, one proposal, there was a bond council, the city's bond council came and spoke at some of the meetings and explained this process to us. Y'all may want to have them talk to y'all also directly. It was pretty informative. One of the aspects we had discussed at the committee was doing some hybrid system where there'd be a threshold before it triggered that. The bond council said, you know, that he actually wasn't aware of anywhere that did that, but that he also didn't see it with any prohibition against it. So it might be something to explore further. Accountability, the police chief came up substantially. And then community policing was another issue that came up over and over, as it does at pretty much, at pretty much every public meeting. So those were things that we relayed, wanted to relay to y'all.
Can I ask a question? Okay. I don't know what the question right back was. Okay. I would just want to ask, just a little bit, just a little bit, a long, just a question. Just one thing I was listening to, is that like, department heads are for the evaluations and for the reevaluations on integrals, integral, on integral. But if the, if the department head sent it the pleasure, the pleasure of the mayor, where does the evaluation come into that conversation? Because I always thought that the mayor determines department heads, so how does the evaluation matter? And does it even make any sense to do it? And if they work for, if they serve the pleasure of the mayor, how could the council or even consider to reappoint? That's just a question.
So in terms of the evaluations, it may not. It may not matter. You know, what their relevance are, it may be questionable. How they would do it is because the charter sets forth who has the power to do what. The charter is what gives the mayor the power to appoint department heads that serve at his pleasure and can be removed at his pleasure. So, so change, so, or her. So changing, so changing, you know, that balance can be changed through the charter. Whether it's, you know, a good idea or what the effect of it is, is another matter. There was substantial input from the public and that was related to accountability and everything from, I would say to some extent, over probably just about every department within the city. I mean, you know, I don't, that's not, it wasn't singling anybody out, it wasn't all negative. But it was just, it was, there was accountability and operation was something that came up many, many times. Is this the perfect solution to that? You know, no, I don't think anybody here believes it's perfect. It's where, what we came up with. In terms of the four, in terms of the appointment, yes, the appointment would still remain at the pleasure of the mayor. It would just be for, instead of it being an appointment once and then they remain indefinitely, it's just something where they have to be reappointed every term, essentially. Is that, you know, so the appointment, it's, the mayor's appointing with the term.
Subject to the confirmation of the council.
Right. That's what, that's what this adds. Right, right. That's what this, that's what this is.
That's what the charter says now.
Yeah, the charter says now, the mayor appoints them subject to confirmation of the council. What this change does is it makes it essentially an appointment for the term, and then each term they would have to be reappointed. Correct.
But we can just, yeah.
Well, that's actually, I'm sorry, that's, yeah, to clarify, that was actually not, that's not, it didn't reach the level of a recommendation for a proposal because we couldn't reach an agreement as to exactly the mechanics of that.
Okay. I don't understand anything.
One of the purposes for the evaluations also because the evaluation is not just the city council evaluation, it is also the community having an opportunity to input to the evaluation of the people that are serving. I don't know if any one person can say that they know what everybody else is doing and their effect on the community. I would think that the mayor would welcome an evaluation of his people by the community and by the council on the work that they're doing, come on any job that you have, even still the service, where it's difficult to get rid of somebody. Every year you have to evaluate. So part of that evaluation was also to get input from the community on the job that the people are doing. If they're doing a great job, that's fantastic. If there are issues that are concerned, then the mayor will know about those issues as well as the council, and those issues could be addressed as needed. So the evaluation does have some positive anchor, especially if the council should decide to, to adopt a reconfirming process, which is not a proposal, which we couldn't agree on whether you had to have three, two, or four, or one, or what that number was. But those evaluations could go into whether or not that person should be confirmed is something that you could look at as well. So it's important that the community feels that they have, this is their city, as our persons who all say, and talk about the public. So this is an opportunity for the public to get input on what's going on in the city and how things are being.
Ms. Knighton, how you doing?
I'm good.
Good, good. I know you're tired. Look, this debt, can somebody from y'all committee answer this for me?
The what?
The debt. Roman numeral, number three, number one. Cause, cause you know, I'm sitting here and I just started reading it. Administration officers found an argument in favor of amending the charter to allow the city to incur bond debt without an election of the people? Can you explain that to me? Cause I'm lost.
So, right now, this is, right now, the city, if it wants to, like for instance, when y'all bonded the money for the water sewage septic.
Sewer pond.
Treatment pond. The council and the city could not just incur that debt. They had to have an election. You remember there was, that we, like a little video that was, went to promote it and everything, and there was an election held. And so the only way that that bond could have been issued by the city is if it, if it had passed that election. It was a process. It took, it takes several months to get it, you know, on, I mean, there's two elections essentially held a year. There's a process it's got to go through to get on the ballot. It costs the city money to get it on the ballot. It just takes time and costs money. And so it's not just, it's not a topic that's just come up in the city of Hammond, but there are, there are other cities. It's a, it's a, it's a discussion that has been had politically through many municipalities and private parishes, in that how do we, what authority do we need and process to get debt? There was, there was initially, I think there was some desire to change that. Actually, at some point, the mayor spoke to us and took the position that it was fine the way it is, that, with the election. So it was, it was something, it was a topic that again, has come up multiple times. It was, it would change the way debt is incurred. There are some municipalities that have changed this. To be, the council and the executive can issue debt without any election. So they have, they're...
They won't.
Right. Right. And so, and so it's not, it's not a, it's not some red herring that the council and administration would be able to incur debt on behalf of it. It's just, right now, the way it is here is one way, and there was a discussion about changing it, but that would be the change. So right now, if y'all wanted to build, if y'all wanted to do a fifteen million dollar, you know, sewage bond, you would have to have an election to do that. If this was changed, you would just have to follow state law, which wouldn't necessarily require, it's not necessarily never going to require a election, I don't think, but it's different. It makes it, it would not always require an election. Thank you.
Anyone else have any other questions?
I just want to say, it was a pleasure working with Leslie, Ms. Arlene, Frank, and Nick, and let's not forget Chris Bardwater. He started off in the beginning, and then he had some other obligations to do. And one thing that we should remember from this charter review committee and for you guys who are for it, we didn't always agree, but we agreed to disagree. And it was a pleasure working with each one of you.
I'd certainly like to thank all of y'all for working on his, working on his committee. And Leslie, I, you know, certainly thank you for the enormous amount of note taking. You know, that is just, that was, that was a lot of work, a lot of work. And Frank, I'd like to, you know, maybe we can somehow get that documentation archived in the city or something. I mean, that's just too much road to just, you know, see it disappear. And it's probably, I shouldn't say probably, it is good information. And the next council that comes around, you know, it's a good reading.
I think that's important because we were wondering some questions from the last committee, some of the things they did. And Leslie did fantastic notes during our, I believe, fantastic notes, where they go back to the minutes to do our report. So I think that the minutes, of course, aren't going to be public records, they would just call it a public record. But I think that it's important that, you know, that be available to the people who come after us and want to see what we did, what we found.
Absolutely.
I want to say thank you as well to all of you. Twenty-three meetings you had? That's commitment. And as I think Councilman Wells noted, you know, these, you guys and most boards do this without any compensation and just your good deeds. And so it's greatly appreciated. Nick, thank you for coming in and filling a spot after being a few meetings behind. So I appreciate that.
And I'd like to thank you guys for the hard work that you put in. I really appreciate it. I'd like to thank Ms. Knighton for representing District One.
I want to say the same to everyone. Everybody did a great job, hard work, no compensation, just putting your efforts there every Monday, every other Monday, whatever it was. And, you know, all these boards is what makes the city go. And it's important to have residents who really want to improve the city and spend their time. So appreciate it. Thank y'all.
I want to say thank y'all for getting Tracy out the house. I want to say that. Then, you know, it's nine o'clock, after nine, and to me, my opinion, y'all need to come back again because the people need to hear what y'all said and what y'all been doing. At nine o'clock, how many people still up? I don't know what happened with the agenda, I don't know what's...
I made the change on the agenda due to some of the stuff that was going on. I made that call.
Okay. So now, they really need to come back out because it don't make sense for them to put in twenty-three, twenty-three meetings. And here it is after nine, once again, it's nobody to hear what all y'all did. So I apologize. You know, I thank y'all, once again, for getting Tracy out the house, and I appreciate everything that y'all was doing. I attended some of the meetings, and y'all gave me opportunity to talk and stuff. Sometimes I thought I was at the council meeting, I was ready to turn the desk over, and y'all told me, calm down, Devon, it's not your meeting. So I want to appreciate everything, and it means a lot, you know, to me. And that's why I say, y'all need to be where everybody can hear what was said, what took place. Thank you again.
And I'd agree with Devon on that because y'all were the last ones to come in and present, and so y'all had to sit there for a long night. So this is an extra meeting, so twenty-four meetings. So, yeah, I appreciate it again.
Thank you. Any other council reports?
Yes. Golly. First thing, I want to say thank you to the city councilman. I've been saying it lately, that you all have made me a better person. Come up here green, don't know nothing, learning, trying to learn, but I want to say thank you to you all for making me a better person. Pastor Andrew, appreciate you coming out. Mike Showers, you gonna get your chance to speak, and I thank you for sitting and waiting all this time. The street lights, I pretty much heard how we can do that now. So I want to thank the representative that was here. So now we can get some street lights in the community. We're really having a problem getting a ditch clean in the community. We have a problem. Sent the email out about getting some streets cleaned, and I'm real puzzled because I'm looking at the equipment that we purchased, and here it is, 2022. I'm looking at city workers spending hours with a shovel cleaning a street when we have, in my opinion, could have rented a street sweeper that could have did the job in less than two hours. And we still got four streets haven't even been cleaned yet. And we need to manage the time better. You know, I know that's not my department, but I'm looking at, look like the equipment we buying, and we saying it's for the clean ditch, it's for the ground and stump. And yet, we need one man operate this, one man operate that. But we still, the streets, the ditches haven't been done yet. And look like, and I hopefully, after the night, when I asked for a ditch to be cleaned, in an email, that I receive an email back saying the ditch been completed, I still have to go out, the homeowner calling me, "Councilman Wells, they ain't done the ditch yet, they ain't done the ditch yet." Yeah, well, the man told me they short of manpower, they don't have all the men in place. So that's one of the issues I'm having. And I'm gonna leave it at that because I know it's been a long meeting. But Mr. Showers, I thank you for sitting down, he's part of my report, Pastor Andrew part of my report, and I had, man, I don't know if y'all been praying or not, but hell, look like y'all done heard what I was gonna do because y'all put this here at the end now. So, and for the next two weeks, I got another fifteen people gonna come out, a part of my report. So let's keep putting it at the end, however y'all want to do it, and the fifteen people gonna keep coming out, and we gonna sit until we lay eggs, but we gonna come out though. Pastor Andrew, you come... Pastor Andrew, you come first, and just say something, I know it's late.
I, I sure will. I just want to say this, and that is, um, I just thank, I thank God for this community, I thank God for you all, I thank God for being, listen, I'm a veteran, and I just wanna say this, that this is the greatest country, this is the greatest nation in the world. I, I truly believe that. What I would like to see is for us to come together, and, and, and as a pastor, I, I, I can't help it, I just have to say this, when it comes down to it, if we, it's just love, it's all about love, it's all about love. If we would just learn how to love each other, we would not have the problems that we're having right now. And it doesn't matter who you are, I don't, I don't care what, it doesn't matter what district you come from, we all ought to understand that we're one Hammond, we are one Hammond. District three, district four, district one, district two, district five, doesn't matter, we are one Hammond, and that's what we should work toward. I had fainted, that's what David said, "I had fainted unless I had believed to see the goodness of the Lord in the land of the living." And before I closed my eyes, I would just like to see all of us just come together. Thank you all.
I'm gonna have to clap, 'cause I normally don't clap, but I'm gonna have to clap, and I appreciate you saying that, uh, that's what I've been looking forward to, that one Hammond, and sometimes seem like District three not part of that one Hammond, but thank you so much, thank you. Mr. Showers?
All right, good afternoon. Mike Showers, President of Greater Tansfoe Parish and NAACP, Unit 6058. I'm just here to clarify some comments. I know the time is well spent. I've missed an important dinner date myself. My eight-year-old just called me and said, "Hey, Daddy, you're not gonna make it." So, so I'm here. So I will, uh, attempt to clarify some comments that was made in the Daily Store and at the last council meeting regarding the booking room incident. And let me just state clearly, from the NAACP's perspective and point of view, that what happened in the booking room was wrong, and people need to be held accountable. That's just the bottom line to it. That's the bottom line to it. So it doesn't matter, and I'm not gonna get into a back and forth of who said what, or what was misinterpreted. Listen, there was two meetings with the mayor, uh, NAACP, myself, my first vice, and my second vice was present in the first meeting. And in that meeting, we talked about what happened in the booking room. We went over, uh, basically, we were saying, um, we wanted the mayor to know the sentiments of the community, and for, for the mayor, to urge the mayor to hold those responsible, and we offered solutions. Now, to this day, I don't know if any of our solutions have been, uh, taken. The second meeting was with the state NAACP president, and national board member was present, Dr. Michael McClellan. And again, the state president reaffirmed the sentiments of the community, and again urged the mayor to hold those responsible and accountable. So you all have received the report from the use of force expert, you all received that, and he has placed in his report that what happened in the booking room was egregiously and unreasonable and could constitute a criminal act. This is what the, I'm no use of force expert, this is what he has said. And so he offered recommendations, he offered seventeen recommendations in that particular report, and has any of those recommendations been taken or acted on? I think the easiest recommendation that he made when I read was that the Hammond Police Department should ensure that its organizational chart is accurate and in, and, and up to date. That is the easiest thing to do in a recommendation. That should've been done that day, and it should've been brought back to the council saying, "Hey, this is completed. Has it been done?" This is how, this is how you, you, you begin to gain confidence in the community again, because when you take recommendations and you act upon them, make it happen, and make it known that these things are happening. When my phone start ringing from the last council meeting, uh, up, you know, people are still livid about the booking room, and every time it comes up, people, people get emotional about it. And so when my phone ring, and they say, "Mike, I, I, uh, you said these comments in the Daily Store." What's the Daily Store? And I have to get with the Daily Store, because what was said was, and, and I have to quote, he said he spoke with Michael Showers, with the NAACP, who confirmed Bergerun did not hit the victim in the head and suggested he installed another camera. Now you see the wordplay with that, and this is why I'm angry, and this is why some people angry, because that's a wordplay. He confirmed that Bergerun did not hit the victim in the head. There's no way I'm gonna confirm that. I said what the use of force people said, oh, I'm sorry, I said what the use of force people said. There's no way I'm gonna confirm that. So, you know, and, and I'm kinda, the Daily Store has my number, they could've called and verified these comments, but they didn't, they did not. Everybody read it, they called, and they were quite upset about it. So I just wanted to clear the record on that, and make sure that, uh, that, that is clear, crystal clear. And let me just say, the reason why people are still upset regarding the booking room incident, number one, it looks bad, it just looks bad, it looks bad. The community is looking for accountability. Three years, four years, and there's no accountability? Nothing has been done in the way of restoring public trust? This is what we have to do. What happened in the booking room, number three is what happened in the booking room happens all too often on the streets. You guys hear about it. One city, if the folks from crosstown don't feel the same way about policing as the people in downtown, the people in Gray's Quarters need to feel the same way about policing as the people in Oak Knoll. The people in Greenville Park need to feel the same way about policing as the people in Old Covington. Mooney Park, the citizens in Mooney Park needs to feel the same way about policing as the citizens in Villa West. And, and Lincoln Park need to feel the same way about policing as the citizens in Southeastern and surrounding communities. They have to, that's when you have one city, that's when you have one city. You know, I just believe at this juncture, and I'm not gonna be long, and I'll take questions, the city must restore public trust. Public trust is broken here. I'm telling you, you may not hear, I hear it, some of you may hear, public trust has been broken with the police department and the city government. We have to restore that, and it's only one way to restore it, is to lead, take leadership and lead through this. This has been five years, and this hasn't been resolved yet. It needs to, it needs a resolution. Whatever the resolution is, it needs a resolution. The recommendations that's in here, and we need to lead and let the public know what it is that we're doing with this, 'cause this hadn't went away, and I don't believe it's gonna go away. It's not gonna go away. November comes, it's not gonna go away. So lead, take an opportunity to lead, find out what it is that the community is asking for, and lead and implement those changes. We shouldn't be waffling on this, we shouldn't waffle on this. I'll take any questions you may have, I know time is well spent. Here and now, thank you all.
Oh, no, I, I, you know, one thing about it, whenever we talk about, uh, the booking room incident, you're not gonna hear nothing, it, it gets real quiet, you know, you can pretty much hear a pin when it hit the floor, but I do want you to answer this, sir, did you meet with the mayor last month?
I met with-
On the booking room incident?
I met with the mayor two years ago, when this first came to our knowledge, and I have not met with the mayor since.
Yes, and, and the reason I ask you that, 'cause I wanted to go on record, because people was thinking, in our community, that you and the mayor had met with Mac McCraney and the rest of them, that y'all had met about a month ago, and it wasn't a month ago, and that's one thing I wanted you to say, that it's been two years ago when all this stuff first surfaced, that they met, and in the process of meeting, and what come out of it, I tell you, they installed one new camera at the jail. They did, the mayor did say that, so that's one of the things that Mac McCraney asked for, so they did get, uh, one new camera. So that's, I'm lost, just like, well, I'm gonna say me, as a city council, I'm still lost, I'm still confused, and yet I would still like questions answered. As of this day, we, the community is still messed up, and, and I sat there, made it, let it be known, we had a, a special meeting, over fifteen people got up and spoke, and normally, when somebody do something wrong, they'll sit there and holler. I didn't do nothing wrong, all of them was black. Everybody sat there and said how they was abused and beat. They didn't say they didn't do nothing wrong, that's the first thing I was looking for them to say. And so everything I'm saying, you can go back, and, and I say it, and I say it all the time, that's what I love about the council meeting, everything is being recorded. And so, and that's why I say, yes, we need to get a closure on this, we do have a problem. And I wanna thank you for taking time out to come. I don't know how you gonna do about your daughter, but, uh, I apologize for that, you know, and I didn't think you were gonna have to be here this long, but I apologize. Thank you once again, just the president of the NAACP in Tansfoe Parish and surrounding areas. Thank you, Mr. Showers, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports?
Uh, just one, two quick things, uh, we have an Easter egg hunt this Saturday coming up in MLK Park, will start at ten o'clock, and, uh, I'm still receiving phone calls on water bills, uh, not being accurate, uh, water bills, yeah, not being accurate, uh, not being read, and one of the complaints was, uh, a lady had some water in her meter, called a plumber out, plumber said that it was not from the house to the meter, it was from the road to the meter. She said she let it sit for two months and watched her bill, and the bill went up, then it went down, but nobody ever came, they said they came to read the meter, she said she know nobody read it, 'cause she got a camera facing to the meter to make sure when they came. So, uh, I watched the video for a couple of days, on the day that they said that they came out, I didn't see anybody. So I'm just bringing, I told her I would mention it at the meeting, on all the calls that I received on, on the water bills, so I don't, they might wanna check into it to see what's going on, on their side.
Do we have an address?
Well, it's been resolved.
Okay.
Yeah, that's been resolved, but I've still received complaints and calls about the, the bills, going from eighty dollars to two hundred dollars, things like that.
I mean, it's not gonna be a hundred percent accurate any time. People transpose numbers all the time, but anytime anybody thinks they do not have an accurate bill, they need to report it, Shalita will send somebody out to reread that meter, we'll go from there, whether it's a water leak or whether it's a misread, and the bill will be adjusted.
Well, uh, since you brought that up, what happened to the, uh, electronic device? Uh, we spent, what?
Water money.
Yeah, uh, I'm gonna say about, uh, a half a million dollars on electronic meters that we supposed to pass by now, 'cause like the light company, the gas company, and I know this for a fact, they don't even come to the house no more, and it's, I'm yet to hear my wife complaining about the gas reading, I'm yet to hear her complaining about the, uh, the light reading, but I know she complaining about the water reading, because I know, and when I tell people, when I talk, I like to know exactly what I'm talking about. We had a problem, uh, at one of our places, the bill normally be twenty dollars every month, that's what it read, twenty dollars, but this time, it read seventy dollars, am I right? It read seventy dollars, and which we able to pay the seventy dollars. And, and yet, but just think about the district, the area I'm in, and I always think about the poor, I'm thinking about the poor first, that if they don't tell me nothing about the meter, about the bill, I don't know nothing about it, but we can't keep coming up with these same ass excuses that misread, mis, we can't keep doing that, because guess what? I don't know how they reading yours, and I'm quite sure you able to pay yours, but the people in my community not able to pay a two hundred dollar water bill, not able to pay a seventy dollar water bill, not able to pay a five hundred dollar water bill. So we can't keep coming up with this, that a, a misread, a misread. What happened to the five hundred thousand dollars equipment that we bought, the equipment, the new trucks, the new guys? What's going on? What's the problem? We can't keep coming up with excuses.
So you didn't spend five hundred thousand dollars on new equipment? You spent money to upgrade the software, but we only have fifteen hundred out of about seventy-one hundred meters that are radio read, that, that could be read by driving by.
Well, we spent a lot of money on transferring, from paying a contract for seventy-two thousand dollars, outhouse, to bringing it all in-house, so we can get all the figures on there, but it kept getting bigger and bigger to keep it in-house, when we could've just kept, a third-party managing, they said, "Oh, they didn't do it well." We're not doing it well in-house, and we spent almost a million dollars, when it, six trucks, liability, retirement, uh, equipment, steady, and then I keep still getting calls about the deal. I don't wanna get called, nobody should get called that all the time about the water, they're not reading the meters, they need to read the meters if we hired reader meters. All the meters need to be read, like y'all say they read.
We get any calls with the other company as well?
Okay, one forced a contract, it's seventy-two thousand, it's not a million, it's seventy-two thousand.
And when there's a problem, we address it. Shalita handles it.
Shouldn't have to call, everybody shouldn't have to be, it's not, it's a lot, it's a lot, it is a lot.
Well, we can sit here and say seventy-two thousand electronic meters, and when, when did they, uh, do the electronic meters? When the last time they was read? Electronic meters, when the last time they was read?
We read all of the meters.
Electronic meters.
The meters, you can go back, and you can pull any bill, and it will show you an actual for an A, it'll show you an E if it was estimated for some reason, if there was a car over the meter box, if there was some sort of disconnection between the actual meter and the, and the way that it needs to be read, like there's-
And, and we don't have a policy if it's like six hundred dollars, or it's normally a hundred dollars, nobody sends a red flag, or?
Yes, and all of the, like, to my knowledge, you don't have to pay that if it comes back and it's wrong, that's the whole point. While it's being reread, you don't have to pay your bill, it's being reread, it's being handled.
I can answer your question, Frank DeVittore, I can answer your question about the red flag. The, there's a water bill that's normally two hundred and something dollars a month that came in at two thousand and something dollars, and no red flag caught it, it came to me, so.
That's because the red flag could be a water leak. The problem could be an actual water leak, not a misread.
What I'm saying is, what I thought the question was, is that, that some point if it jumps, that why isn't it an automatic flag? This bill, there, there was no, it went from two hundred dollars to two thousand dollars. It was corrected, it, it was done.
Yeah, so did you have to pay the two thousand dollars?
I did not, but, but, but the point is, is that there, there should be something in the system that triggers, why did this bill jump, what is that, a hundred percent, you know, or ten, ten times what it is before it went out the door? Whether it's a, if it is a water leak, or whatever it is, that why, why is that not, why was that not caught before the customer got it, automatically by the computer system?
And it gets harder to manage, if somebody has twenty, thirty, forty, or a hundred properties, and there's errors in all of them, and they're trying to go through and sort through it, I mean, whose word is it, is it wrong, is it not- I mean, whose word is it, is it wrong, is it not, if he didn't, you know, pay the bill then or not and knew they had errors? I mean, so, I mean, there's, it needs to be addressed if, you know, when it's, uh, six hundred dollars, and it's usually a hundred dollars, or whatever it is. I mean, something needs to be addressed. I mean, if we're reading the meters and there's a leak, it should be, when a reader meter says, "Oh, my God, this thing's spinning, let me go ahead and make a note in the system to go ahead and get this stopped." Well, you say that, but we don't want to get the calls from the people that don't. So, I mean, that's what you think, but I guess that's not going on. And secondly, another thing, all the waters, I'm not gonna argue, all I'm gonna say is, y'all need to do a better job of managing that. So, secondly, with the lights, when you replace the lights from energy, the LED lights from the regular lights, what's our policy on that? If you call energy, they replace with the regular lights. You have to call the city to get an LED light submitted in the system? And did we agree on, is it the first tier, second tier, third tier? What, did we ever decide on the LED lights?
There hasn't been a decision on any of that.
Robert Morgan generally handles, handles it on where, whatever territory, whatever area it is.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
No, move.
Meeting adjourned.